Okay, I'll call our commission meeting to order for September seventh, twenty twenty-two, and our first item of business today will be the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's set the agenda. Are we still?
Any cancellations or anything?
Everything looks good.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making motion that we set the agenda for our September seventh commission meeting.
Second that motion?
Have a motion to second, we set the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? Five fifty-nine was fleet. All right, our first item of business is Savian Zillo, if you would please come up to the table.
Fabian with an F, but it's okay.
Oh, it's Fabian?
Fabian with the F, that's fine. It's not the first F.
All right, we'll turn the time over to you, so.
Okay, just so I engage myself a little bit, how much time do I have? I know you're coming thirty minutes long, but I don't know if there's discussion.
Probably twenty minutes or so.
And I wouldn't take that long. So first, thank you for letting me be here. I love Berleak, I love the bike path. I'm not against the bike path, so I'm showing you on my cars right from the get-go. We use it, we wish it went around the lake. There's just some things that have happened that I wanted to address. I've been addressing them as we've been along, going along, and I've been spending a lot of money trying to keep it safe for us and our property. So I wanted to show you this PowerPoint. I did it in twenty twenty. I have a neighbor who works for UDOT, and I was explaining to her the situation. She works on roadways, and she said, put it down so I can understand it better. So some of this stuff on the PowerPoint may not apply, but then I updated it for the current situation. So just so you know, this is what the property looked like before, and it was kind of small, right? But it was just a beautiful, I mean, it was just a nice island that kind of shielded us from the road. It had a lot of vegetation, it was natural. We got an entrance coming into the property east and west. We had one coming in here, north and south. And my whole goal from day one was just to preserve that, our entrance, so that we could take boats and trailers and just be able to still enjoy it. And so I'll show you how that's changed, I'll show you what's happened, I'll show you how this has been sort of destroyed and what it looks like now. I'll show you my, the ramp, how that's been changed, things that I've had to do to make it so I could access my property. The first time we found out about this was March of twenty twenty. We didn't know there was a bike path coming, but we were excited because we thought this is great, but we didn't see any plans, we weren't spoken to, we didn't have any input in it. There's four neighbors in it affects. And so anyways, I'll go through the slides and we'll kind of go through it, but I just kind of want to show what it looked like before I made this again. And so, let's see, right here. Essentially what's happened is, and it doesn't look this deep on this photo, but I'll show you some other photos of what's happened. This is our main entrance to our property, and there's no other way that I can bring in boats and trailers. I have to come in straight on. And in the beginning, we talked about, as you go up this ramp, there were some trees that I had to cut because we couldn't really see the bikers coming up on top of the bike path. So we talked about putting bollards or Z gates, and I got ahold of David Alger from UDOT, he was helpful. And we were going through a bunch of things before even this got asphalted. The asphalt came to about right here where this tree was. And I was, and David Alger said, once we get all the concerns and we figure out layouts and things, we'll proceed and do it. Well, I was talking to the asphalt crew, we said, we're doing it. This is what we're, this is the date we're doing it. And there is no more discussion about it. And so essentially what happened was, I had this to deal with, which is just loose gravel. We weren't quite sure where the asphalt was coming down. It looked like it was probably halfway. As we accessed this, I would spin out usually, or my son, as he come down this bike path, he crashed a couple times because it was loose gravel. I couldn't have this here. So what I had to do was, I talked to the contractor and I said, hey, what is it gonna take to, wherever this asphalt finishes, what is it gonna take to extend it to my property? It was about twenty to twenty-five feet. It was about two thousand dollars. I paid it. I said, I'll deal with it later because we had to access our property in a good manner, safe manner instead of having loose gravel. I've talked to several people about it, and I blocked off names or the people I talked to because I'm not here to get anyone in trouble. I do have email conversations, we went back and forth, but at some point I said, hey, what's all this loose gravel doing? And I was told, enjoy the free gravel, you know? So it just wasn't, and luckily I did something about it because this was twenty twenty and it barely got completed just a few weeks ago. So it would have really prevented our access these last couple years. But the worst is, and I'll show you as we go along, is kind of what's happened to that access. So this is what it looks like. You can see this big, there's been a lot of fill brought in, about two feet of it. And this is really wide, which never understood why, because as you come, as you go south towards my neighbors, it really narrows down to like a four-foot pathway. But anyways, it happened and it sort of stopped. And we met with David Alger in twenty twenty, it was June, June of twenty twenty, and they were discussing different things. At some point, they said, well, if you quit claiming this property. So let me go back and I'll show you. There's three parcels right here. And it's easier to probably see it in this layout, but there's an A parcel where the home is at, then there's an A parcel and a driveway parcel. We've been paying property taxes on those parcels. And so they want, one suggestion was, quit claiming this whole property, and we'll make one ramp, cement it. But there was just a lot of problems with that design, so we didn't feel comfortable doing the quit claim. Then they said, give us a right-of-way easement, and we'll take over and do an entrance, but that didn't, wasn't working because it wasn't gonna give us this direct access. The entrance is actually gonna be over here. Anyways, we were kind of going back and forth, but at some point, the project just kept going. And when I was speaking with David Alger, he's like, well, I'm not sure who's pushing what, but we were still discussing this. All of a sudden, it's asphalted, and so it just kind of kept going. We were enjoying our property, but I had to, like I said, add this two thousand dollars of asphalt so we can enter. So for about a year and a half, nothing happened. So this was the end of twenty twenty. That's where it stopped, and it became a very dangerous situation because at night, people, people would finish the path and either didn't know what to do, sometimes they'd come down our entrance, or sometimes they'd go on the road and try to continue and connect. So for a year and a half, I'm surprised there wasn't any issues there. It was really uncomfortable watching that. But people were confused, and like I said, you could see, I mean, they were actually crossing the road, trying to get to the other side of the path. The big thing too was, they were coming down our ramp, because it almost looks like that's what they needed to do. You know, you kind of see it from here. So they would come down our ramp, try to connect to the other path. We've had people come down our driveway. So what I had to do is I had to put chains, I had to put markers, I put do not enter signs, all sorts of signs. But as you know, signs don't do anything. This shows you the grade. This is how much was brought in. So it was about two feet that that entrance was raised, which I never understood it because most of the path doesn't go flush with the road. So you can see the road is here and the path is completely flush with it, you may even have a small grade. But if you keep going down by Pickleville, there's a little bit of, you know, a slight, what do you call it? Grade or whatever you call it, just softened it. And so it didn't need to be this way. I'm not sure how I got to that point, I'm not sure how that was determined, but this became a huge problem. So this is what, because of that grade, let me show what's happened. When you do a trailer, and I borrowed this from Epic next door, there's about two-inch, three-inch clearance as you're going up the ramp and as you're trying to make this turn from this trailer, you can see. And that's without a boat, so that's just an empty trailer. My boat now is not a V-drive boat, but I am gonna change the boat. But that's what I'm very concerned, what happens if I put a boat on a trailer like that. Am I gonna hit? Most likely. So that's a concern. The other concern is, my mom is in her eighties, the neighbor next door is older as well. As you go up that ramp, you're blind. You cannot see the bikers coming across. And so it's gone really steep and dangerous, but other things have resulted in this, so I'm just gonna, let's do that one. Okay. This pathway, so here's my property as I'm kind of exiting. So what would happen before I got finished this year, people would come down, do a little turn around here and they go back up. Well, we can't see them at all because this is all vegetation. And so that became a bigger problem, so you have people come down, make the turn. And even now they're doing that. I'll show you some of that in a second. Okay, so. This is what I asked in twenty twenty, that we address the grade. Now, emails were sent back and forth well before the asphalt was paved, but the asphalt paving just continued. And so even though we were emailing, talking to different people with UDOT and also with the commissioners, the project just kept going. And we talked about bollards, we talked about Z gates, different thing, and and then the vegetation up on top. So, okay, so here, now we're to the issues now. Let's address these, because like I said, a lot of that was before. So we met at the end of the summer of twenty twenty, July twenty twenty, David Alger, four of the neighbors, and there was an attorney there because my neighbors to the south retained an attorney. We didn't want to join that attorney because, first, I don't believe in that. Second, I thought we could just work it out. Third, I was for the path, so I wasn't sure. I didn't want to be one being against the path. So we didn't, we were not represented. And when nothing happened from July of twenty twenty, all of twenty twenty-one, nothing happened. We assumed there was like stop, no one said anything like, what we're doing, what's going on. So nothing happened in twenty twenty-one. And then in twenty twenty-two, this May, when I was there, I saw that the path was gonna continue without really knowing how it was gonna continue. So I tried to get ahold of people, and on June first, I found out that David Alger wasn't there anymore. Christopher Cheslin is a nice guy. He said, let's figure it out. I was given a plat on June first, the meeting that I was told to come to was June first, so obviously I missed that meeting. And so what's happened since, I'll show you some pictures. So this is what they sent us, and David Ches, or, yeah, not David, it's just that, Christopher. Christopher Cheslin and I met, we couldn't really figure, from what we saw, we're like, well, it looks like it could be this. So we were, even the two of us were kind of confused what it was gonna look like. And so, but meanwhile, my asphalt that we paid for coming down, because of the construction, everything that was going on, got damaged. My signs got knocked off and got damaged. When they were doing the island here, they dumped cement, which is still there. The island, as you can see now, has become a bunch of weeds because it's shrunk, and they've only left this vegetation. Now it's just a bunch of weeds, garbage is in there, so it's very unsightly. The ramp is still very steep, and for three months, we saw this because that took, since May of, May thirtieth until, I think it was August, just recently. So anyways, the last three months of Berleak, we could even use this access, which, I mean, I understand construction is crazy and different. But what's happened now is we've got the cement pad on top, right? So people don't like this little narrow gate. And we've seen it. So essentially, that's what it looks like. You've got a gate, and the Z gate is accessing that neighbor property to the south. The runners will go through the Z gate and be just fine. The bikers, they'll get there and they'll come down our little dirt, well, the cement almost looks like that's where you should turn around and they'd come back up the ramp. So I gotta put some sort of gate or something preventing it so that I don't have these issues where people just kind of think, oh, it's a cement turnaround, they kind of come down and then go back up again. I would have never, I mean, I thought it was possible, but in Labor Day weekend, I saw four people do it as I was sitting there watching them. They just came down. Now, the runners do go to the Z gate and they go across, and maybe there are some bikers that are walking that little bike across. But what I witnessed was, like I said, I couldn't believe it. And now having bikers coming down here, where I completely blind, I can't even see them. So I gotta put some sort of gate or something up there. So these are some of the. Now, other people's properties was affected by this. Epic Marina, the grade changed. So it looked like what happened was, all their poles were extended and new fencing was put in. And I don't think Epic did that. I think the city or UDOT or somebody did that to fix that grade. My neighbor, they installed the fence. I don't think that's his because his was actually all the way across. So this was all fixed and done. So I know other people's had things done to make it so that it's safe and improve, you know, their access. So those are the things. And I'm like, well, all these things were done, and all I've done is I spent the two thousand dollars to fix my asphalt so I can get on my property. I put chains, I put signs, I put markers. And so these are some of the things that I just wanted to talk about and address, and sorry, it took a little longer than I thought. So I like that island on top to be fixed somehow. Some vegetation added or just the concrete removed for sure. I mean, it just looked like a dump, the spot there. So I don't know who or how or what I have to talk to to do that, and I'd be happy to meet on site because you can see how unsightly it's become. So that little island on top, I like that to be discussed. The possibility of fixing the steep grade, now, I'm not an engineer, but there's just a lot of things that I'm like, because from the neighbor to the south, it seems like now we're going up into this plateau. I'm not sure why that had to be that way, right? So maybe there's things we can discuss and talk about that fixed. That steep grade is a concern for me, not only now visibility-wise, but when I try and access a boat or something down there, might be a problem in the future. And so that's something I like to address. I also feel like I was sort of forced or pushed or rushed to make this decision to make this asphalt, and I needed it. But I like to get that reimbursed because I figured, I didn't change the grade, I didn't leave loose gravel by my entrance, and I needed that to access the entrance. And then I liked the asphalt that was damaged by the workers fixed. And I put up, like I said, entrance markers and signs, those are all, because, you know, it's limited access, you really can't make that good turn. And they're bringing trucks and people that were working, and then they're gonna fix that. And then as far as the last item is, because there's the Z gate and there's the neighbor gate, like I said, it's just sort of forcing people to kind of come down, so I have to put some sort of gate up on top. So there is another expense that I'm like, well, who pays for that expense? Because since this gate has hap, or since this bike path has happened, it just seems like I'm just keeping adding things to make it so that it's safe for us and we don't run anybody over. So, I don't know, there it is. That's my thoughts and feelings, and I've sort of waited till now because I wanted to see what the end product would be like. Because again, it seemed to me like it started and it sort of stopped for a year and a half, now it's started again, and it seemed like now it's the finished product, so.
So as we started into the process, I guess the big concern was, and the reason it stopped where it did, was because everybody's concerns was trying to be mitigated so that everybody felt comfortable with what was going on. So the path was in construction, it was put out to bid, and we decided the best thing to do is go ahead and complete the path other than that section and work those things out. So as that, as that went on, the unfortunate part was, is that the last spring, when we basically intended the path, we got no bidders on the path whatsoever, zero. Because it was such a short project and everybody's busy and nobody wanted to even even worry about it, I guess, so to speak. So through the winter, we talked to several other contractors, see if they would give us a bid on it. And earlier in the spring, about, I guess, the end of March, first part of April, the contractor who had done the original part of it said, I'll, if you, you know, I'll do it if you, I don't want to, but I'll come and do it because I want to get it finished. And so at that point in time, I, you know, everybody says, well, we had no idea it was gonna start, but the issue is, and I, and I think we, we were, we were, we lacked communication with everybody as far as, hey, we're gonna go ahead and now move on with the plan that was looked at in twenty twenty-one. Because we have a contractor, and so I think the lack of communication of getting you contacted along with the other neighbors, that falls on us. There's no doubt about that. As far as the things that, I don't, I don't know how we could fix the, the grade of your, of your driveway. I guess I would like to know what your thoughts are. You say you're not an engineer, but what are you thinking to? I mean, we, we, you know, it was paved right down to, to your cement at your property line there where your gates are.
And I'm not, again, I'm not an engineer, but you see what you did here on this concrete, how it softened and it came down? And then automatically that dropped about a foot, and if you narrowed that up on top and so that you don't have this huge wide. Yeah, you see, that's like so wide. I'm not sure why, and then it really narrows down. So again, my thought is, the longer you have, the more you can make that a grade. If you, if you shrink this to here, yeah, your path here is gonna be steeper. If you have it so that the path is mostly wide, plus it's really dangerous here. If I was driving, and by the way, twenty seventeen, my son, these cars come so fast. My son got hit. Luckily, nothing happened. But he was crossing the road, the cars were coming fast, he was on an ATV, he got hit. These cars come cruising at sixty, seventy, eighty miles an hour. So it almost looks like that's part of the road. If you're standing there, and if you're, if you're a trucker and you kind of have sleep, you might just even get into the bike path because this is completely flush, you can see that. So I'm not sure why, that's the only section out. By Pickleville, there's a little bit of a, you know, like a grade that comes, and I'm not saying that's the solution. I'm just saying, if this wasn't so wide, if this wasn't flush with the road, that could give us enough room to just at least fix part of that so it's not such a steep ramp. But that would have to be looked at by someone that knows what they're talking about, probably not me.
What about putting fill on, down on the other end of it? Building the other end up?
That would be fine too. I mean, there's a lot of things. You can see where the trailer is, well, that's probably a good picture. So this was brought up a lot. And yes, I think if this was sort of softened this way, I think that would work too. There's a lot of things that can be looked at. I just didn't know where to begin, and again, I'm not an engineer, just kind of looking at logically saying, hey, if you have this huge path and you gotta get up to this ramp, it's but yeah, I'm just, like I said, this was the first step. I was told, come to the commissioner's meeting, and this was the one, so. I would love to meet on site because I know these pictures don't do justice, and I think on site you might be able to see some things. And, you know, I'm not, I don't think I'm being unreasonable. I mean, I'm willing to, if it's my responsibility to put up a gate, then I guess it is. But, you know, I just want to say for everyone, I don't want the bikers to come down to the end and go, oh, now this is a natural turnaround. And I would have never guessed until I saw myself at Labor Day weekend with four others, like, I can't even believe it.
What, what kind of gate do you think needs to be?
Well, so I would think just a simple, like the way you did it for my neighbor here. So, well, that's five minutes, let's go to the one where it's got the concrete. Yeah, so right up on top here, I would just say a simple swinging gate, like what you did. This one. So that it shows private property, so that these people aren't gonna just go, oh, I'm not going down that Z gate and having this neural path. So I'm just gonna turn around and just go back to see where I came. This way right now, this, this is so far down, people are just, oh, well, this is where it's supposed to go.
There should be a gate on that road too.
So I mean, thinking, you know, just a little bit here, and on the front, I was, I'm fine with just like leaving like a chain or fixing what I have because, again, people see that beach access, and so they, they automatically want to go down this ramp and go. So I was just putting a chain, so it was easy, but I, like I said, I, I don't, I think something there would be nice up on top just so that people don't come down. And if my neighbor, the only one that really uses it is my mom, that can't do that steep up, and the neighbor to the north, that's the way they access their property, then you just open it, go in, and then shut it again. Otherwise, like I said, we created more traffic down here, and it's very difficult. I can't cut all that vegetation out to see what's going on. Up on top, I did, because I was like, well, there's trees, whatever, but.
Okay. Well, we can, we can move our contractor and our engineer and see what, see what we can work out.
But you see, it's, like I said, it doesn't do it justice, but just by dropping some of this would fix that too. But again, if there's a better way, I'd be willing to discuss anything. At this point, I feel like I'm just trying to do what I can. These little signs, oh, this is a perfect example. You know, I've got little signs, you know, trust, but it doesn't matter. It just automatically looks like you're supposed to either make that turn or go up, or with those E-bikes, it's kind of fun to go on a turnaround.
I think modifying what's currently there is gonna be really hard, but maybe helping you modify your private property is gonna be easiest. Because, because diving into a completed construction like that's gonna be really, really, really difficult. But I, like, like Commissioner Cox said, we're, you know, we're happy to look and see what we can do to make it easier for you.
And I tried everything I could in twenty twenty to address this. I tried because I knew it was a problem. I sent pictures, emails, I've got a copy of everything we said, communication back and forth, because I was like, once this happens, this is just gonna be in my mind. I worked for West Valley City, I'm a construction manager, a facilities manager, I know how budgets go work and how they are. I'm like, this is gonna cost ten times as much fixing it later, but no one was hearing me out as far as the project was gonna, you should see some of the emails I'm at. Here's the best one. I mean, I've got several. You got two options. You enter into an easement agreement and the driveway gets paid, or you don't enter an agreement and the driveway's gonna be paid. Those are the kind of things I was getting, and I'm not here to get me in trouble.
Yeah. Well, and I think the way it is where it's wide now, more likely what would happen is that bike path would be, they're not gonna decrease the wideness of the road, they would push the bike path over closer to you to, to create a bucket between the road and the bike path. Does that make sense? So I don't think, I think just modifying, us helping modify your personal property might be the best.
I'm willing to hear whatever, because like I said, I'm here by myself, I'm represented with my little knowledge. But I do know the accesses, and I'm like, mm. So yeah, I'll be happy. And again, I think the best thing is to meet on site. I don't know if that's possible, if you ever do that. But I'll, I'll come down anytime you are available and you want to talk about it on site, we can make some recommendations. I'm really easy to work with, really, but.
Have we built gates on the neighbors?
To the Z gate.
But I mean, uh.
Well, we just replaced the gate we had with, with a swingy gate.
So this, I think he did this at Epic, where he raised all the poles and redid all the fencing, because that looks really nice. But I think this, right next to the Z gate.
I, I think Ideal Beach may have paid for that fencing. Uh, or did we do it? We did that, can I?
See like right there, that, that's a newer fence that was put in so that they could also have, so they basically, really, as you go up, and they have the short end of the stick, I feel bad for them, right? The runners, they go down the Z gate and they run around, and some bikers do walk it, but most of them aren't. They're just, especially the E-bikes. They ran them down there, they're not gonna take that extra, so they just turn around. So I was thinking, you know, something like that. So I was thinking, you know, something like that, simple, or we can just block this access here, so that they're not automatically thinking, oh, that's my turnaround.
That's an easy fix there.
That's, yeah, for for you, for me.
And and I totally get what you're saying, um is is the grade of the cement ramp easy? Is it, I mean, cause you saw.
It's better, my mom can go up and down the lady, um, cause you know, she's like in her late eighties, nineties, that's her only thing and she's like, that's much better. In fact, they all wanted to come and I said, you're welcome to, I'll go talk with them, um, just so that we can see what what to do, but.
So your concern is just the the asphalt section that.
If it can be fixed, or like you said, if we can do something to soften it up, so it's not so steep. Even Christopher Chestnut, I'm like, go up the ramps, and everyone that I've talked to is like, what? And and right now it works because of what we have, it works for me and for my sister and so, but. Yeah, I think if we just kinda looked at it and addressed it and you and you gave some ideas, we can, I don't expect you to tear everything out, I'm just, what can we do, right? To try to fix it. The island on top, I mean, we gotta try to fix that and that's an easy fix, remove concrete, maybe add some vegetation, make it so it's not a weak disaster. Best thing is on site again, I tried to.
Okay, so um we'll look at the gate up there at the top where the cement was poured. And we'll look at the grade to see um if there's something that would that would help that, so this. Which would probably require moving the asphalt to make the grade different, but we can look at that. And then that concrete, I mean, I don't know why we didn't clean that up when they cleaned the project up. We'll get that that little whatever they where they dumped from the cement truck. And so those are the three things we'll we'll look at, will get something else?
I'll just, you know, if we're gonna look at the asphalt, let's just kinda revisit what we think. Like I said, I paid for it, if it's the cost of making this better, I'm fine with it. If it's gonna be as is, I like to get reversed, I mean, we can talk about that, I don't want to take people's time, I don't want to waste time on that. I would like that before we, anything gets done, just if we can communicate, just so that we know, can work on it. And I don't think they would have driven up on the concrete, right, so.
So we have to do that, fix the signs, we turn them down. What what signs are you talking about?
I just had some signs up on top that were markers that kinda showed. Oh, I've got a picture going down, there was just some markers over up on top here, um. Yeah, so the markers are kinda just marking so that you could see that where that body was, cause I know you can't even see it, it's just really steep, so. Just reflecting markers and things, but.
I like a little bit, the length.
Yeah.
Keep going on your pictures, I think there was one picture there, I think showed the. Right there.
Originally, yeah, so you use markers here, so those are, and they've just been broken and, you know, just kinda sitting there.
And and you you had a chain across there, so what was the chain hooked to?
Just these green posts. The reason I had the chain here was before, when that project ended, people were just like, oh, the road ends, so it probably falls down. So people would literally just come down and just go try and connect to that path. So after a while, I'm like, we're gonna put a chain or something, the chain had a sign, it was like, it was gone. And like I said, this, I don't know, this looks really bad, um, this island here, just real really inside, especially, you know, the weeds and the concrete and. So I don't know if there's other things we can add there to make it something, so. But again, I, the best pictures if we met outside and everything was discussed, means if that's what you'd be discussing, not what you do.
So what what's your, what's your uh idea about the island there? Cause if you plant any more bushes, you know, that's gonna restrict your your side distance as you come up out of there, so.
Well, this is 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 very deceiving, it's kinda, it's very tall, right? So I'm just thinking, just little things that cover some of that, well, now it looks even, when you've got the weeds and the concrete and the. So you can see what's going on now. So just like this, this regular vegetation is just, I don't know, I don't know, I'd see that, so. Just something so that it's not like a tree or something to go up, but so that it covers, so it's not just a bunch of weeds and. Yeah, you can see the the pile there.
Okay. Well, we'll get the. We'll get the asphalt out of there and look and see what ground cover could be put in there that would help put the weeds down. One thing about it, whatever it is, um, the weeds are gonna be there as well, so we'll have to figure out how to keep the weeds down.
And if that's my job to keep that down, that's fine, I just felt like when you see it, you see it's very kinda barren and cut off, it looks just funny. So if there was something put in there, some vegetation or something to cover it.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll go look at the site and we'll have our engineer come and look at the grade and we'll talk to our contractor about uh. Number one, what happened to your markers and number two, uh getting that concrete that was left there that was just dumped out of there.
And then the gate, did you say something about the?
I thought about the gate at the top, yeah.
Now I'd be happy if you, well, I'd be happy to meet you when you go on site, just so we can all sort of talk about it if you want.
Can we find out who put the gate for the neighbors, cause we gotta do the same. If the neighbor put their own gate.
No, they didn't, that was part of the project.
So we should do that too then?
Well, the neighbor had a gate there, we just replaced it. There was a gate there, we just replaced it.
Maybe I have to go into to some of that.
Whatever we have to do to have that be directed, well, yeah.
Okay, well, we've got a list of things here we'll go over with our with our project team. Um, we're gonna include Chris Chestnut in this as well, um, since he took a big all those places, we moved through this. And um they can look at the design as well, um, but as far as as dropping that down, I don't know. That's gonna be an option, but we'll we'll sort of have a discussion about it, okay?
And if you wanna go without me, that's fine, I can give you the gate to the code to the gate, you're welcome to go up and down yourself and just see what you think.
Uh, the, you you mean further down?
Well, I'm just, yeah, if you if you decide, hey, well, you know, except I'm there, obviously, but if you happen to say, let's go on a Tuesday, just us. I'll give you the code and you're welcome to just kinda try it yourself and see what you think, see if I'm being unreasonable.
Well, so um the steepness of the grade is all outside of your your gates, right?
Yeah, I guess the only thing you, I guess, you just see the blind spots, but yeah, it'd just be outside of the gate too.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, well, we'll take all those things um into consideration with our team and have a look at it. And if we're gonna get together and meet over there, you know, if you'd like to come and and talk about it, so.
Thank you, I apologize if I took a little extra time.
Oh, you're fine. Thanks for coming and bringing your your slide, show us what's going on.
It's for your time, all right, do you want me to want this?
No, you 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 keep that, we can get another one for you. All right, Mitch, you're on.
For the officials, thanks for letting us be here. Uh, just so you're aware, this is Michael Hansen with Rural Community Consultants, he's been our consultant on the general plan rewrite. And uh, he's really done a nice job, planning his own, he's been very pleased with him. Uh, Tracy Horstley gives him a two enthusiastic thumbs up.
Only two?
Um, do you want me to go first or do you want Mike to go first? Do you have a preference?
No, we don't, we'll just, it's up to you guys.
Okay, I'm happy, I'll have you go ahead first then.
Is this broadcasting this um on your Zoom or? I see this one.
No, no, it's not, but you can still plug in.
Well, if if you if y'all can see it, I don't know, I just wanted to go through a few slides, just uh, you know, for the record. Um, for anybody that might be listening in, um, and I can share the phones over here. Uh, again, Mike Hansen, Rural Community Consultants, we have a very interesting project in Rich County. We normally do obviously one town at a time or or a county at a time. Um, the Rich County one was interesting, Utah gave the the grant to the county to say, yes, we want to update our general plan as a county. But we also want Woodruff, Lake Town, Randolph to get theirs updated at the same time. Love that, um, just there's an convenient scale there and there's so much interface between towns and and the county when it comes to land use issues. Uh, it just made a lot of sense. Uh, so Garden City was not um under contract for us, but we did interface with their consultants, cause they're going through the same process right now. Um, so what I wanted to do today is just give uh just a five minute overview of why a general plan matters. And some of the things that make the Rich County plan different than others. Um, one thing that absolutely needs to be clear, uh, for anybody interested in the general plan, is that it is an advisory document, it's also a living document. So under state statute, in Utah, you need to have one as a local entity, um, but it probably ought not just sit on the shelf, it needs to live as things change. Um, it's not zoning, that's the other thing that's important. Um, your zoning stands alone, but it needs to have uh its rationale coming from um your general plan. Uh, the goals of the general plan are pretty straightforward, uh, again, we were matching s- uh state statute um best we could. But there's also, because you're a county, there is a requirement for you to also update your, it's called your CRMP, your county resource management plan. It's a different part of statute, towns don't follow, um, but it's it's heavy guidance, I was gonna say. Uh, from the cap, from the state on taking positions on certain policies. And while this contract was going, um, the state changed the rules on CRMP, so not only did we update it, we added the new chapters. I'll show you that there in a minute, but if somebody was to uh trap me in an elevator and say, quick, you have thirty seconds, tell me what the Rich County general plan's themes are. Water, we heard a lot about that, um, traffic and it it's not just traffic, I think it's the impact of the seasonal tourism. Uh, and of course, housing, uh, I, there's no part of the state that isn't complaining about housing, yourselves included. In fact, the census released some numbers in the middle of this process and um Woodruff Town, uh, they came in and they said, well, the average household income for Woodruff residents is a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And um that didn't go over very well with Woodruff, uh, we had to chase that down and we got it corrected a little bit. But the reason why I bring that up is household incomes haven't been climbing nearly anywhere near where our housing are, even in uh Rich County. Um, and that's a challenge for your residents and it's not getting resolved very well, especially with interest rates being played around. Uh, a highlight for you is your future land use map, you did have some lands that didn't have a very clear land use designation. Um, we looked at those, we didn't get too creative, um, these are some of your, I call them grazing areas, but you know, your your steep slopes and that kinda stuff. We we added um the definition basically in the the main corridor, the the mountain corridor, uh, that you, we thought was relevant. Uh, also another highlight, this is just a state requirement, you're supposed to identify your future transportation corridors. Uh, while we don't think there's any more interstates coming to Rich County, we did define uh some of those.
Did you look into that carefully?
Spent a lot of time on that. Um, the other thing that happened during this this project, um, the legislature likes to move the finish line on these general plans. Senate Bill one ten uh requires local governments to start thinking very carefully about water conservation. Uh, I think they're even gonna start calling it preservation, um, which, you know, for an agricultural based uh county, um, that's a big deal. You know, we gotta be very careful where we go with policy on that. Um, we pushed the state, uh, experts that are supposed to be providing the technical assistance on that. Uh, they were not ready, so we used our engineers, we came up with some very, we think, palpable um parts of the 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 plan. So we think, what I'm getting at is you have an appendix in your your general plan draft. Um, that could, we would argue, could be turned into the state complying uh with that. And that's not due until twenty twenty-three, but we know you're probably not gonna update the general plan between now and then, so that's why we wrote it that way.
Good.
Also, uh, we went through that CRMP and our firm actually helped the county with that back in seventeen, something like that, twenty sixteen. Um, some things have changed, uh, you you made some good progress on some of your goals, we have a few typos I'll confess to. Um, we had great uh assistance from DWR, by the way, uh, their staff really dove in and tightened up a lot of language. Um, nothing changing at the policy level, but just making it cleaner, better, you know, easier to read. So I call those the minor CRMP updates, we won't spend a lot of time looking at those. But the state, like I said, changed the finish line, so there's a new requirement that every county has to talk about. What critical minerals are um located inside the county. Uh, made it easy for the Rich County one, we looked and we didn't find any in in Rich County. Now, critical minerals are, well, there's another chapter about rare earth mineral minerals, can't even pronounce most of these. Um, they're just not geologically located up here, so um we still comply with the state statute and that needs to be turned in uh as soon as we can. Um, there's also a chapter on pipelines and infrastructure. Um, if you look at Rich County, there's just the one known, um, and and these are major pipelines, this isn't local infrastructure stuff. Um, these are big regional power corridors and such, uh, we discussed those, mapped those out. Um, there's another different one about uh utility cores, still not sure of the difference, but I'm not a legislator. So anyway, those are your, we have an appendix on each one of those, I know I lost one pretty quick, but um those are ready to go. Uh, the public lands office has reviewed them, they like them, they just can't accept them until it's formally adopted. So.
So on your background, your pipelines, you. You've got. So according to this. Which is the only pipeline you have?
Yeah, it's an electric corridor, uh, or power corridor. Um, that's what the state, actually, this, that's their data.
Okay, so is this is this a pipeline?
Not sure, yeah, I think that might be the highway, I think that's the freeway there.
No, freeway?
Or not freeway, I'm sorry, that's, yeah.
Well, I don't know, cause that comes down around.
Is that bad?
So there's, there's there's actually three pipelines.
Oh, less than that, sorry, I didn't even read the top, yeah, less than the uh two thirty kilo volt. So it's it's, it is a.
So these are power lines or pipelines?
Well, they call them infrastructure corridors and then there's a different chapter you have to write about utility corridors. So we struggle to understand the difference between those.
Okay, so the way you've got these, these are all power?
Yeah, yeah, these are the power, as far as gas and and such, I'd have to look, but I don't remember Rich County having a lot of concerns. Like it goes through contested federal lands or anything like that. If I remember correctly, so.
So we do have several pipelines.
Yeah, you have pipelines, yeah, for sure, and and they support your, you know, towns and such. But um, but as far as the ones the state wants you to focus on, the the ones that are big regional, um, ones that's still, when they pulled up. Anyway, we do have language on that and the the states looked at it, they like it, they, uh, we did some different mapping than what the state gave us and we didn't find a whole lot different, but, you know, it's there. Uh, so um, as far as next steps, it's been through the public, uh, we've been working on this for, I think our contract was last year, mid-year or something like that. Is when we started, um, we didn't get a lot of public input, uh, in person especially, did get some online. Uh, it was mostly at the town level where I heard from residents. Um, uh, the planning commission's been through it, they liked it, they recommended adoption. And so the next step strategically is the county commission has to be the one that actually approves it. And then once that happens, we have to get it turned into the state. I think they were looking for that this summer, so. That's where we're at.
So as far as um, you say we've got to, we've got to submit our our CMP. Um, so would you do it, just sort of just submit our our total plan to them?
Um, yeah, so what, if you voted to approve it today, then I would take, I'm not done yet at that point, I didn't take all the draft off, say this is the form. Say this is the formal one. And then what we do is we take those specific chapters, fold that into the CRMP document. And then I'll turn that into the state.
Cause I read through it, it was uh. You know, it's quite a document.
Yeah, a little more detail than you had before.
It is, you know, it's it's great, I think.
It's good. You know, one thing I'll tell you, another elevator thing, somebody was trapping me. They said, what's Rich County all about? I'd say, well, the people that live in Rich County live there on purpose. They want to live there. They're there and they wanna stay. Beautiful place and people who figured that out are, they're passionate about that, so.
Yeah, I noticed where when you're back, when you're slides back there, talked about the growth in the Garden City area, but. Lake Town didn't wanna see that top.
Yes, so. So to do Lake Town or uh Randolph has approved and adopted theirs. Woodruff has done with theirs. Um I'm done done. Fifth planning commission, the town council. Uh meeting with Lake Town again tonight. They have some pretty big concerns um about the potential for um. Higher density housing than they think they can actually accommodate. There's this sewer septic issue that we're discussing and we're concerned about traffic. And they they look at Garden City growth as a kind of concern like there. They feel like it's coming their way. So we're trying to help them write policy that that matches state mandate and what the community wants, so. That one's not bad.
But but badly needed.
Yeah, they do. They really need to do that. Uh the zoning that was put in place before is. Proposed to change a little, not much, but a little. Um they have new industrial that's in the ground that's not recognized on any of their documents there. They wanna enforce some policy that isn't really justified by their current plan because their current plan is so old. So that's what we're discussing tonight is, you know, if there's any more gaps that they're seeing. There's also questions about a few parcels of uh city owned land. But I thought it wasn't the unincorporated part of the county, just on the outside of their boundary there, but. Yeah, we're gonna work on all that tonight, so.
Good.
Yep.
Good.
Well, and I got the census numbers um corrected, so it's not an average income of a hundred twenty-three thousand. It's a sixty-something, so. Where the folks are like that, feels a little bit better.
So tell me what you had to do to change that, Mike.
So it's the same thing I had to do with Google. I would just work um do a lot of work in Parwan. And there's this road that's a residential road, but then you got kind of the arterial that goes around the residence. Well, Google's used to say, you know, you go the fastest way to get to Brianhead if you come from Vegas is to go right through the neighborhood and the residents hated it. Put up speed bumps, stops under, they couldn't get people caught because they obey their phones. Everybody thought, well, what do you do?
You don't go against that phone.
You obey your phone. So what we figured out is just call Google. They actually have a person that works there that answers the phone and says, oh yeah, sure, I'll just move the map. So after the city invested all this money in infrastructure and traffic signals and speed traps and. Just tell Google to tell people who are. Anyway, that's what we were doing with the census. Uh we talked to the state folks. Um we said, really? You know, cuz I've talked to the residents and they they think there's a couple maybe, you know, big ranches that might be able to turn the average up, but that's an entire town. To take the average of every household in the city limit. To get it up to a hundred and twenty-three, that's that's tough one. Just call.
So it just needs to.
Top with the census anymore is just math. They they don't do a lot of real canvassing door to door stuff, so. When there's a controversy, when there's a problem, they have to actually go back and look at real numbers and go, yeah, I don't know how that happened. This is about right. So and it matches close to to Randolph.
So Randolph wasn't an issue the first time.
No, Randolph was fine.
Mean income was about sixty thousand.
Yeah, it was in that sixties range.
Well, well, Woodruff is just where the rich people are relocating to, right? So. We've got, when you when you come back, when you have a road, we have a road that that. Comes up on Google as a as a public access road and it's and it's not.
Yes.
And how how do we fix that?
All right, we gotta just get you that number. Literally, you just have to call. The other thing, Google's getting better that you can actually go into the map and dispute stuff that's on the map. So if, you know, the pin for the county courthouse or wherever is across the street, you can actually, you know, just kind of click into the map and. Start to debate stuff and say, you know, it's actually here. So that's that's a new thing, though. That's, I just did that. Two months ago, so.
Okay, yeah, cuz this is this weird. I mean, everybody and the and the guy finally locked the gates and then said, well, on our on our map, it says it's a public road. Yeah, that's exactly right. We, you know, we and we know very well, it's not a pro- it's a public, it's a private road, so we need to.
It's important to do that. I've noticed what the Googles of the world are doing is they're reaching into these. Reciprocal, like if the county was hosting a bunch of GIS data or the town or the state HRC. And if those are out of date, Google just crawls and steals those all the time and then they just kind of glue them all together. If you can get your local maps right, over time, those things will clean up, we've noticed, but. Still, it's a lot faster if you just get in there and start clicking around and protesting stuff.
Mike, we'll get that in.
Might be stuck in the snow and the mud, but. We followed the phone. So we need a motion on this?
We do.
I'd make a motion that we accept the. Mike Hanson's. General, county general plan. The new one for two thousand twenty-two. Say no motion?
Okay, we have a motion in a second to update our general plan. In favor, say aye. Those opposed. All right.
Thank you.
Well, good luck in Lake Town. Yeah, and uh would you would you get that number for for us from Google and?
Yeah.
Cuz we 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 could get that. Appreciate that. Thanks, Mike.
If you'll recall, last month, uh we came in and had a platinum.
You identify yourself.
Sorry, Mitch Paulson. Talk loud. We came in last month, or I came in last month requesting a a change to the uh. Development code book to include a plat amendment process. Um we've been getting feedback from banks, uh lending institutions, uh the assessor's office or recorder's office, sorry. Um and the title companies that that using the building covenant for. You know, changes to uh existing plats just isn't robust enough. They want something more more refined and so. We brought in a platinum process last month. Uh it was approved. And now we're just asking for, I'm just asking for approval of a platinum um form and fee. And I worked with uh Brent on this, the engineer. And uh he, I put some ideas together, then like him, he sent this back, says he really likes this this process very. On page two, this is where it lies, it's got all the supplemental requirements. So you got this check, this list of checkboxes of all the information that we want as a county on these these amended plats. Um so that people know exactly what they're required to do, what the engineers require draw up. And uh and then just, you know, the standard, you know, contact information from the applicant, where their project is at, property owner. Things of that nature. And then the the fee, the fee schedule. So there's two types of fees, ones for administrative processes, ones for the public processes, broken down into the administrator and the engineer. And uh where preliminary plots right now are two hundred dollars, we left it at that. And if it's administrator, administrative one, uh that'll be a hundred dollars. And then the HRC fee is just whatever Brent fills for review on these. So anyway, that's uh it's kind of a short skinny of it. Ran it by the planning commission last. Uh a couple weeks ago at their meeting. And uh and they approved that with a change to the fees.
So last month, Tony, was it this document that we wanted to send to the public lands?
Yes.
So did this go through? Didn't get any feedback?
Said it looked like it was fine. They hadn't made any changes that would affect.
Okay.
Our our county resource management plan, so no, they were fine.
So sorry I interrupted on this. I didn't know which. Was.
Yeah, we sent this to the public lands policy office and they reviewed.
Well, we were dealing with Mitch last time when we were talking about that selection.
Right, well, he brought he brought the draft in. We said we wanted to get a copy of it, so. Yeah, I.
So is this the packet they would get?
Yes, yeah, we'll put that on the county's website, so people can just download directly. Interestingly enough, I've got like four of these waiting in the wind to get done. And people are chomping at the bit to have bigger properties, so.
Do you need a motion on this?
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we accept the new plat amendment form along with the fees. Second.
Have a motion in a second to set the updated plat amendment. In favor, say aye. Those opposed. Okay, motion passed unanimously.
Cool, thanks.
So take care of that.
Sounds good. Uh one last thing before I head out. Uh will you guys be averse to me looking for funding to redo our development code? Work now, now we've got our comprehensive plan done. Start bringing that more into compliance with state statutes.
I think you're better.
Okay, sounds good. I'll be looking for some.
Yeah, um. Right now, we get time to do that.
Yeah, the UDOT funding's coming out and it seems like this these planning documents are good uh. Good uh sources.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So Mitch, we got more of that grant money, right? Or we're going to get more of it?
Yeah, I submitted the reimbursement for the last hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I will email Chris cuz I haven't heard anything back from him and I suspect if you had heard something, I would have heard something. So.
So we'll start that process again, people apply for the money and. And so we just roll over what we didn't have spent in the last month.
Oh, you're talking about.
Yeah, you're talking about two different things.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the bike. I fear you're talking about the general plan, I'm sorry.
No, I'm talking about the.
The economic one.
Economic development.
Yeah, so I still have people. Coming up to speed going, hey, I wanna submit this, can I? And we've never made a hard and fast policy in the county, but once July one starts, we're cutting off. I I did send them an email letting them know that that was the case and oddly enough, I still have people requesting it, so. I'm just gonna go ahead and submit those invoices to you for payment, if that's okay with you. But yes, if they bail out or they don't spend it all, it just rolls over to the to the current year.
And how much money will that be? Do we know?
We don't know yet. I can I can put something together and have it back to you later today.
Well, it's fine. I just wondered if there was a certain amount that we were getting again.
Getting again? Yeah, we get the two. We'll be asking for the two hundred thousand again.
Two hundred thousand again.
Don't make sense? We all clear?
Won't be asking, what we getting now?
So, okay, sounds good.
Randall, come on up.
You guys need to take a break?
Nope, we're good.
Only if you're coming to ask for more money.
I'm coming to ask. You know me, I'm like a pit bull.
You know you, Randall.
So uh time goes by so fast. Can't remember if it was uh. Last week or two weeks ago, I met with uh Senator Wilson. And I was talking to him about the growth that's going on over here and he's aware of it. Apparently, he's thinking about buying his property over here. And uh he said that uh he made an amendment to the marina's uh. Growth uh fund that, what, fifty million dollars or something to increase the size of the marina? And to add like a five hundred thousand dollar. A year continuation uh maintenance uh fee. Have you guys heard anything about that?
Haven't.
He said that uh a certain percentage of that was supposed to be set aside for all of the first responders. So I thought I'd bring that up.
Percentage of that five hundred case hanging on.
Yeah, and that was part of the wording in the amendment and apparently was. Some percentage. He said there wasn't a fixed amount put in the amendment, but some. Amount of that on ongoing maintenance that would go on after the deadline to use that fifty million. Isn't that cut off like the end of twenty-five or something like that? Seems like it.
Yeah, but it's non-opcing fund, so it'll it'll be till the marina's finished, but you know, they're they said. They have they had set a construction date of of that, so. Um but yeah, so if if he's got an amendment in there, that that five hundred thousand. So was that coming out of the fifty, well, sixty million?
No, it's an addition aft- after that.
Okay.
Is finished, there needs to be some continued uh budget increase because of the increase of the marine, right? And so uh a certain percentage of that would go to all of the first responders. And so he asked me to give him feedback on what your thoughts on that was and apparently your thoughts are, you hadn't heard about it.
Yeah, I I knew he was doing an amendment um about the ongoing maintenance, but I didn't I didn't know about. Um the first responder percentage, so that's good to know.
Okay. So the other thing that we talked about is uh how can we get some more funding uh to help pay for the. First responders. He's on the same page as I am that we should be trying to figure out. Ways to get the new developers and the beach users to pay for the additional services that. Are being required by all the first responders. And so he's wondering if there's some way that the fees could be increased. Like building fees, uh garbage sewer connection fees, uh. Uh additional cost Airbnb rentals, um something like first responder fee or ordinance uh compliance fee. To increase uh that and that would be a small impact to that. Those rental companies or. Or Airbnb and Venmo or whatever it is. And I don't know if that's something the county has to do or county and the city or what would be the way to do that. Cuz you know, right now, we just increased taxes and now you're making the people that don't require the additional services to pay for the growth. When it should be the.
Girls.
The growth that's paying for it. And that's when I came to you a couple of years ago and talked to you about impact fees. And that's when I got educated on what a. Mess that is. And he said he won't talk about impact fees down the left deflection. He said that's a poison pill.
Yeah, it is. Well, you know, there's. You know, we have our our TRT tax, um and they. You know, with the with the way they've got the percentages on that, um more of that can be used for, you know, mitigation of. Of the impacts of the nightly rentals, um people that come in and rent. So there is, you know, that that percentage of that that could probably help to a certain degree. As far as, you know, um garbage and those kind of things. I don't know, the rates are already to the point where we get people so upset over the fact that they're only. Their their cabs are only used three months of the year at the very most and they're paying for twelve and they're not, they're paying for no garbage. You know, they're paying for their garbage to be taken away for, but it's kind of like, we have no idea when they're coming and when they're.
Exactly. You gotta be able to have that uh capability when they do show up, so there's that cost in there. Yeah, that doesn't make sense at this point.
Yeah.
So so about the easiest area to, if you're needing more money, um it's like Commissioner Cox says, it's a transit room tax now that we can. We have the ability to help more with that since we changed those rates. Uh cuz just like you said, if we were to increase sanitation, it would need to be used for sanitation, you know, cuz that's. Also has an increased pull from it.
has an increased pull from it. Um, but I don't, I don't know if we have any ability to add, um, additional fees other than increasing you know, building fees and stuff like that. TRT seems like it'd be the low hanging fruit.
Yeah, and that's one of the things we talked about, what, a year ago or so, and seeing if, uh, the fire department could get some funding of that.
And we've made the change since then, that, that we can use almost, you know, half, almost half of it towards mitigation. We don't want to do that. We'd like to continue to do projects throughout the county, but a bigger portion can be.
Yeah, well, with the growth going on, uh, I see where we're gonna have to hire another full-time employee or part-time employee at the minimum. And also, as you know, I, I come to you guys last year, I think it was, uh, about some property, uh, for a satellite station down on the southern end of the district, cause it's gonna be needed, and we're still looking at that. And, uh, wha- what's the guy's name that owns, um, Sweetwater Golf Course? I wanna say Nate something.
Nate Perry.
Yeah, he approached, uh, one of the other board members a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, apparently in his master plan, he's, uh, trying to set aside some area for a satellite station to be part of that master plan. I haven't seen it, but we'll talk about that some more at the meeting tonight, and, uh, and I'll get more educated on that than what I have right now to share with you. So anyway, our, our costs are gonna go up to to get that land, hopefully he's gonna donate it to us, and then we can give him a, a write-off for, uh, contribution to the fire station. But then we're gonna have to pay for the material and, and of course, the equipment put in it. We're hoping it'll be large enough for at least, uh, one truck and, uh, another ambulance probably. I don't know if you guys have been talking about adding another ambulance down to that area or not. But we're seeing with the growth going on, all we need to have an excellent down there.
Yeah, we're mostly trying to figure out how to get volunteers to run the ambulances we have.
Exactly, yeah.
So how is, Randall, how is your budget? Like, uh, are you guys currently running pretty good?
We're doing good because of the growth that's going on, uh, because of the impact fee that we put on it at twelve cents, uh, a square foot, uh. It's increased, uh, our budget, and, uh, then we've also increased the inspection fees, uh, for the short-term rentals.
What were they before?
Started out at twenty bucks, and we, uh, increased it to fifty right now. And Mike was doing three or four at no additional cost, and I said, that's BS. Sorry, Becky, but, uh.
Do you do this, do you collect that money every year or is it one time?
Yeah, e- every time there's some, uh, they put in for a license.
But not when they renew it?
Uh, if they renew the license, every year there's a.
You get a portion of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, of course, the impact fee on the growth is going to slow down here. And it's not something that you can buy land or hire employees on, on that impact fee, cause it goes away. And that, and the problem with the impact fee is you guys may remember is, um, I can only use that to buy fire trucks if it comes from commercial impact fees and for a truck over five hundred thousand dollars. And that's what I was trying to talk to Chris about, is can't we change the wording to districts like us that has bit budgets less than a million dollars can use it for their discretion and not your dictated discretion? And that's when he said he's not gonna talk anything about impact fees.
So on, on your im- on your impact fees, what can you use that impact fee for?
Maintenance.
Maintenance only?
Yeah. Maintenance and operations, but not buying fire, fire trucks.
Or, or paying for salaries or employees, right?
I need to check into that a little bit more. But right now, we're using that to pay for the expansion of the, of the fire station. And that additional, uh, cost. And then, of course, all of our costs have gone up with the cost of gasoline and everything else. So let's see what else I, uh, coming over, I saw, um, beach access, uh, signs. Did you guys put those up or?
Saw our lines put them up.
Okay, uh, I don't see any on the north side of the Marina. That's the first I saw of them, I, cause I was late getting over here, I didn't stop to read it. I don't know what it's saying. Is that gonna be part of your discussion at one o'clock?
It could be. No, well, no, it won't be, because those are sovereign land signs, and all they did was they, they were right along the beach, or they're right along the road, and they just moved them down onto the beach, which.
I just saw them right there in the parking areas. So I guess when they go on the beach, they know what the rules are.
That's exactly what it is, yeah, yeah. They, they actually replaced some and made them a little bit bigger. That's.
Yeah, well, maybe that's why I just noticed them today.
Yeah, yeah, they've, they replaced it, and they actually put some down almost to the water, so people.
And then the last thing I wanted to talk to you about, I guess primarily you, was, um, we can't get a fire under Richard to get, uh, whoever he's assigned, right, the MOU between us?
Yeah, I think Bill's involved in that too.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So I was thinking, we need some leverage from you guys to, could, we've been talking about this for now over a year.
Yeah, so they, they changed. Jeff Rastuson was that, and, and now it's a different guy. Um, and, uh, he, he's a little overwhelmed, um. He promised me that after Labor Day, that he would set a meeting up and, and we would get together and discuss those. Um, just discuss the MOU that's we presently have in place and the changes we feel like we need to make with that, so. Um, just lost his name off the top of my head, but he's, uh.
It was like Tyler or something like that?
His, uh, he's, he's ready to, you know, do something with it. He, he's, that's, he was assigned by Jeff Rastuson when they, they changed the divisions, so that, uh, that was, uh, one of his priorities, and he's, uh, unfortunately, he's over. He's over everything in the whole state, and he's just, and they're down four people, so he's.
Ty Hunter?
Ty Hunter, yeah, that's him, so, um. We'll, we'll get a meeting set up. He promised me, I've talked to him a couple of times this summer and said, and he said, I haven't forgot. We're working on that.
Who would be invited to that?
Um, uh, he wanted to have it up here, so it'll probably be, uh, Richard and, and probably either me or John, um, the sheriff, who's over switching rescue, and probably Mike while we're the chief.
Okay.
Well, we can let you know when it is.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. Okay, so then with this change of the TRT funding, then maybe we can get a little bit of help on that.
So how you wanna do, what happen, what you wanna do on that is, um, as we, as we do those, you'll need to prepare an application of what you wanna use the money for, and submit that, and go through the TRT board process, um, maybe keep in touch with Tammy Leonhard on that. She's kinda the the organizer of the TRT board, and she'll convene the board, and they'll take the projects and so submit an application for, for funding for what you wanna use the funding for.
That's gonna happen pretty soon.
Okay, I'll bring that up in the meeting tonight. Uh, what I foresee is our, uh, five-year plan, or ten-year plan, or future plan is that, uh, we see that we need to, uh, upgrade our fleet to one, a minimum of one truck uh, every three years, cause everything right now is fifteen to twenty years old. And, uh, as you may have noticed, we've only been buying used stuff that we can afford that are costing, uh, less than a hundred thousand dollars, and it's getting by. The other thing I was wondering is, what, who would we talk to about trying to get the, um, short-term rental impact fee? You know, the houses are being built as a residential house, right? And then immediately when they get the authorization to man it, they come and apply for a short-term rental license. Seems to be like when that happens, it's now a commercial business. So now I could convert that impact fee that I got for that building to a commercial, so I can use it towards purchasing trucks.
Um, at this point in time, they don't meet the commercial code. And so it would actually have to take some legislation to change that. Um, I know that's a discussion that's being discussed, cause we're not the only county that's got these short-term rentals, and, and what, what occupancy does that trigger, the commercial codes that's gotta be uh, in place, like a hotel or anything like that, and then at that point in time, if, if they meet that occupancy level, whatever, whatever's gonna be determined, um, then, you know, then a commercial impact fee could, could apply. So that's kind of up to the state with them changing, um, the, the laws and the way that's set up, but right now, um, there isn't a, a minimum or, yeah, a minimum occupancy of what it, you know, as a hotel, you automatically apply for a commercial building license, and like you say, um.
Yeah, but I'm not talking about a building.
No, I know what you're talking about. I'm talking about a, a, a home that's being built, and then they put it into an hourly rental pool. And at what point does it become a commercial building versus before it's even built, before it's just a, a, a home? And so, um, that's what I'm saying. There's some discussion around that of, you know, if it's more than fifteen people, then should commercial, then it should be, it should go into the commercial, uh, portion, I guess, of the codes and everything else.
I'm not sure we're on the same page yet.
The men of, the men of they take money from people to render, it should be in the.
Well, then it's been, by then you've already collected your impact.
Yeah, right, so, so now what I wanna do is be able to take that fee.
I don't think they can go retroactively go back. Oh, you're saying the fee you collected now is eligible.
Should be eligible to come into a commercial, like, type account. I don't know how to word it, cause this is out of my.
That seems very, very difficult.
That be able to say, okay, it, it was residential while it's being built, we collected the impact fee, whatever it might have been. And now they've made it a commercial building, can I take that? Thousand dollars or fifteen hundred dollars, whatever it was, and put it over into this other account, so I can buy trucks or that. As, uh, at, you know, because right now I can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would take it, that would also take an impact, an impact fee, they would have to tweak the impact fee legislation, so, um, yeah.
Cause it's not a tax, so I don't know why they're, why they're involved.
Well, you probably have more luck is when they, when they actually apply for that, you know, you have to go do your short-term, uh, rental application. We charge two hundred fifty bucks, probably adding some fee on that, you know, or a, a fifty bucks that goes towards you know, emergency services or whatever, specifically, cause you know, if you have four hundred of those rentals, you're getting an additional fifty bucks.
And growing every day, like right now.
When you're doing an inspection, you know, the issue about that is, is well, you're doing an inspection, so you're already collecting.
Yeah.
So, um, I don't, I don't know.
While you guys noodle, let's have three more people thinking about it besides this lonely retired handicapped veteran.
Well, we'll give that some thought. I think it would have to, in order to be able to change the purpose of the impact fee, or make it, yeah. Where, where you collect it as.
As residential.
Where you collect it as residential, and then you make it commercial. I don't know how. I don't know, that would probably take some legislation to do that, but we can look at that.
I'll think about it, um, cause as you know, I'm trying to figure out ways that we can get these, um, people that come in and spend a day or two or three, uh, to help pay for all this additional services, especially the beach people.
Yeah.
Right now, the TRT is, uh, your best vehicle for that.
Well, you guys are in charge of it, so.
Fill out an application. Uh, when does that board meet?
I think she's probably gonna meet towards the end of September.
So where do I get the application?
I'll go talk to Tammy.
Tammy Leonhard.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you, see you.
All right, um. Mike, did you need to talk to us, or you just?
No, I'm sorry, I just cleaned up the documents.
Okay.
Just comfortable chairs.
Okay. Okay, great. I just was wondering, all right, so, um, we have, uh, the Utah retirement employment election, um. We have to, uh, uh, document that, uh, the county is going to pick up the member contributions for the Utah retirement employee, uh, for, i- i- in the Utah retirement employee, uh, retirement, so, um.
So here's the document, and there are two, um, different, let's see.
Two different tiers?
It says, um, we can, uh, check mark that we wanted to do the tier-two public safety and firefighter contribution retirement system with the following pickup election, and that will be paid by the employer. So it's just saying that we'll pick it all up, all, all of the retirement up. And then the other box is the tier-two public safety firefighter contribution retirement system. Um, will be paid in lieu by the employer in lieu of the town employee contributions as firefighter. And the first one is public safety, so do we wanna do both of them? We don't really have any firefighters that are on the, that are on our retirement, but they uh, want the document signed.
This is something we do every year?
No, this is a new thing by the retirement system this year, this year.
Well, we have no, we have no firefighters that are employed by the county, so we will probably only do um, the, uh, public safety. Well, the issue is, tier-two, the, the one is public safety and firefighter. The other one is, um, that, that, and that it will be paid by the employer in lieu of the contributions for members serving as a public safety officer. Okay, so.
So this was kind of a new thing, and, and some of the counties did it, some didn't, some of them elected to have the employees pay a little bit of it. Um, but so far with Rich County hasn't done that. We've paid all of the retirement.
We've paid all the retirement, so this is where we elect that, um, we either pay it all, or we just pay ninety percent. An employee pays ten or five or something to that effect. So, um, I guess that's it, that's the, uh, question before us. As of right now, we're paying all of it, and, uh, that's part of our benefit package, and so.
I think that's good.
I think we probably need to continue to pay all of it at this point in time, but that's just my. That's my thoughts.
Did you pay it all?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we don't wanna give everybody a bill. Yeah, after we gave them a raise, and they just take that money back out.
So, but an ex-rus is pay all?
Uh-huh, yes.
I make a motion that we give Bill the authority to sign our employee election to pick out member contributions marked as. Give Bill the authority to sign our employee election to pick up member contributions marked as all.
Second.
Okay. One favor say aye. Those opposed. Obviously passes unanimously. So there you go.
Thank you.
With a copy of the minutes, she should be in good shape. Alright, um. Lita. Myler.
So she wanted to talk to you about um, helping. Behind all of the short-term rents.
We talked to her. At Booth.
What's up? Is that where you got that?
Yeah, she's a hundred with that. That's why it's here today.
I, oh, okay. I got it now.
You thought I just brought it for the heck of it? I didn't wanna get tossed out. No, she's got, she does what John, the program that John.
The fines, yeah.
Yeah.
Chronicus.
Yeah.
Plus, they, with her program, they can go, they can pay. Their taxes on, through that program. It goes automatically to courthouse and all. Amongst other, many, many other things. I'm not the type guy, so. That's just a couple of things I remembered.
You hit all the buzzwords, so.
Uh, yeah.
That and their, their. I don't, I, well, you know, I don't know what it's gonna cost, but see here. They uh, they would actually do the one that chases them down.
They do a little enforcement?
So while we're waiting, with those minutes. You understand the minutes?
Yes.
Is there a question? Yeah. Property from commercial. I thought we had to change it because he wanted it commercial and it was in agriculture. Is the reason he had to change it, cause he wants to put his business there. Is that not right? Didn't he come in to change it from ag to commercial?
Mm-hmm.
Let's, do you think you could get Mitch on the phone about that? I, I looked at my notes because I wondered about it. And. But yeah, we need to get it right.
Yeah, that's backwards.
You think it is?
Yeah, he was trying to move that from ag to commercial, so he put his building there. Travis?
Yeah.
You do read the minutes, Sam?
I betcha.
Hi, how you doing? I was, I was. And the, and the weeds along the road. Is there, is there one mile in this whole county that don't have weeds alongside the road? Yeah, so. When we changed that property for, who was it for?
Travis Hobbs.
Travis Hobbs. Did we go from ag to commercial so that he could build, put his business there? Okay. It was in agriculture and we changed it to commercial, right? Zoning. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Now, we just had, in the minutes, we had it the other way around. Yeah, alright. Thank you. See you. Bye.
Okay, I'm gonna change. Did you see anything else?
Well, I probably better read him. Really close now. I would uh. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of that correction.
Uh, so move?
Second.
Hey, all in favor say aye. Okay, the non-sole be stand. Pass this. Motion to approve the minutes, we passed.
Which road was it that needs to be marked as private?
So it's a road that comes out of Sweetwater Trail Course called Mayfly Drive. Um, and it goes to the, oh, it's Mayfly.
Oh, I see it. Yeah, yeah, right here.
Yeah, and that's. That goes across private property.
This road's bad.
Actually, well.
Let's see how much it might.
Should go all the way to the middle of the road.
Right here too?
Yep. It's right there, yep.
Ah, okay. That's gonna make me do a couple of sections at a time.
Okay, so I gotta change from agriculture to commercial.
Okay. That was just test and you passed. So she called and wanted to be on the agenda, right?
Right, I was just gonna see if I had the phone.
Last I heard, I thought she couldn't come today and was gonna come next month, but then I seen it on the agenda, so. Oh. Canyon View Toilets. I told him to go out here and services. He went out there and the tanks broke. Okay, that's why it's dry and everything's leaked out and blah, blah, blah. So he just sat on the heads there.
Okay, so. What are we asking it to cost us?
About a hundred bucks a month. Alright, I guess it depends on how often you want it serviced. So, do we pay Indy by the month of the year, the summer season, or what?
We what?
I heard by the season or the month?
Month, actually. Um, every two weeks.
So that's two weeks, or?
Maybe it's a month, I don't know.
It's probably a month. All I know is it's worth it, cause she's, yeah, so it's, we're not getting all of that.
Try your butt. I just got her voicemail.
I was just thinking about me passing the test. What? I was just thinking about you passing the test. I take this job really serious, you guys. I know.
I know we could discuss. So, a lady from the Utah counties um. And we've talked about this before, but I, we didn't really go anywhere with it. Um, it's a program where they can collect like our ambulance bills and stuff that. We haven't collected. Are you familiar with that?
Mm-hmm.
Utah Tax Refund Exchange and Compliance.
And then they intercept like an tax returns?
So do you want? To mention it to Ben today and have him review these documents or, or have you, are you familiar with them? You want to do it? Do you not want to do it? I don't know if you're familiar with it enough to say.
Um, so are you? You know, they'll collect anything, but you're thinking more of the target would be our ambulance bills? Is that what you're thinking?
That's really the only thing that we have that's a problem because our sanitation and weeds can go on their property taxes.
Right. We can have, you know, I mean, there's quite a few counties that are doing it, you know. In fact, there's a lot of counties that are doing it across the. Across the.
She's gonna call me tomorrow and see what.
Called tracks, that's what it's called. Tax Recovery Exchange and Compliance System.
So maybe have Ben review the documents and then um.
You know, we can, yeah, I mean, we can have, we can have a look at it, you know, as far as. I mean, like I said, it's, there's several counties that are. That are using it. Um, I was talking to Sherri here and um, laid back to get a picture of hers. She said they had quite a few outstanding bills and they're, they're actually doing all of them. Um, weed and, and their emergency services and. Uh, what else did she say? That uh. Uh, oh landfill. They were turning it over, their, their landfill. She said we have issues with our landfill.
Yeah, we, we have a, but just hardly, not that many, but we could. See, our big thing's ambulance.
Right, because they don't have any tax on the property, just send them the lien and that's the thing. She said that's anything that, fees that are. Uh, generated by people who don't have property, even though they may, may live there, but they may be renters and things like that, and so.
So do you need him to, to?
Oh, I think we probably oughta just have him, yeah, let's just have him look at it.
Okay. I'll do it. I'll tell her that, but I'll get it to him. In fact, I can make him a copy of this and give it to him today when he's here.
Cause some of those we're not making any headway with, so we just will turn it over and then see if there's, you know.
We either need to do that or get a collection agency for the.
Right.
Sanit, or the.
Since we don't.
Ambulance.
Since we don't go to small claims anymore, that's what we need to do, so.
I think you're, the only way you'll get money is by just rerouting your tax returns. Sounds kind of mean, but.
Well, we do it all the time for court.
Yeah, it's, I think it's the easiest way to do it.
So, okay, I'll give him a copy of that. So apparently she's not gonna come. Do you want?
She probably didn't know how far it was here.
Sure you love.
Um. Well, we don't have our public hearing until one o'clock, so I guess we can adjourn for lunch. Let's adjourn for lunch and we'll come back at one o'clock.
All right, I'll convene our September 7th, uh, commission meeting back to order and, uh, our first, uh, item of business after our lunch break is a public hearing amending ordinance designating certain roads for off highway, off highway vehicle use.
Actually, we had the one o'clock one is the beaches. Am I got it mixed up?
Yeah.
Well, the public hearing noticed that went out to everyone's, uh...
So I've got one o'clock on there.
Bear Lake beaches, sorry.
Okay. Well, we will, uh, be having a public hearing on the protection of Bear Lake beaches then, apparently. So I'll open that to the public. Um, I think I'd invite our county attorney Ben Willoughby up to talk about, um, the ordinance that he's prepared and the changes.
All right, uh, Ben Willoughby, Rich County Attorney. Sure, uh, Ben Willoughby, Rich County Attorney. So, uh, we are continuing what's a kind of a long, months-long project to go through all of Rich County's ordinances. Uh, many of them are decades old, uh, some of them handwritten, and just make sure they comply with changing state law and that they're still making sense in 2022. So one of those projects is the protection of Bear Lake beaches. Uh, Rich County has had an ordinance in place, uh, protecting Bear Lake's beaches since, uh, 1991 is when that was put in place. And it was a great, uh, ordinance. It, uh, restricted driving vehicles on the beach, um, fireworks on the beach, obviously littering, depositing human waste, um, uh, camping, you know, leaving things on the beach. So the problem, well, not problem, the, the reason why it needs to be amended today is that, um, in May of this year, so 2022, uh, the state of Utah amended, um, the state code, this is entitled 65A of the Utah State Code, uh, sovereign lands trespassing amendments. And, uh, this section that they amended, uh, subsection three specifically applies to Bear Lake's beaches. So the state law, uh, now has a, a portion specific to Bear Lake's beaches. And it governs driving vehicles, camping, um, uh, littering, um, fires on the beaches, all of the things that our ordinance did. And so it, uh, it's, it displaces our local ordinance. So once state law has filled a niche, then counties, um, either need to comply, match that exactly, um, or we are displaced. And so, um, we, uh, need to make sure that our ordinance mirrors, um, the state law now for the use of Bear Lake. The, the proposal for this new ordinance, um, so the boundary of the state land is the mean high watermark, which is 5,923.65 feet above sea level. Above, below that line is state lands, above it is not state lands. So this new ordinance, uh, makes a couple of small changes, uh, just to be in compliance with the Utah State Code. We, we used to have it be that it was a class B misdemeanor to violate it. State law now makes it a class C misdemeanor, so we need to be in compliance with that. State law now makes it a class C misdemeanor, so we need to be in compliance with that. Otherwise, our ordinance mirrors exactly the camping, driving, littering, parking, fireworks, campfires, all of those provisions that would be regulated or restricted on our state beaches will now mirror the state code specific to Bear Lake. The one exception is ours is that it expands it for any sandy beaches that would be above five thousand nine hundred twenty-three point six five feet. And so if there were a prosecution, we could, could simply show that it's a sandy beach surrounding the lake without having to show whether it is above or below five thousand nine hundred twenty-three point six five feet. So it extends the full protections all the way up to all sandy areas that would be considered beaches surrounding Bear Lake on the Utah side.
Better public.
Better public. Yeah. Any questions about that?
That was my first question. It was public, it was any land that's public. So private landowners who have sandy beach area above the high watermark, they're still okay?
Yeah. Yep, so, but we've had a really strong, good ordinance that made a lot of sense in place for, you know, thirty-five years. It just so happens that this year it got nudged by state law and needs to adjust.
Where do you think that state law come from?
I don't know, did it come from us? Did it? Okay.
It's a delay when you get a car bell, yourselves.
But a good job, it's a, it's a good ordinance. And I think this will be a good ordinance. It makes a lot of sense. Does anybody have any questions about specifics?
Yeah, I have a question on camping. When I read the definition of camping, it says ends for tarp. A lot of people take camp fees and stuff down for shade during the summer time.
Overnight, overnight camping is what we proposed too.
So the definition from our proposed statute today defines, it says, camp or camping means the act of temporarily residing at a place using a camper, trailer, motorhome tent, or other accommodations for sleeping. Camping does not include sun shades, umbrellas, or tarps used during normal beach daytime activities. And that, I think, mirrors the language. Let's see. Okay, so this is where that came from. We've had that, that definition in place since nineteen ninety-one, where the statute previously stated, camping shall be defined as being an act of temporarily residing at a place using campers, trailers, mobile homes, tents, except for sun shades, umbrellas, or tarps. So it was intended to keep that in place as it's been since nineteen ninety-one.
Okay, I didn't read the exact concept.
Yeah, it's a great question. Anything else?
I bet you had something. So the other question is, who's going to enforce these regulations? Is that county sheriff or Parks and Recreation? Who's going to do that?
Parks and Recreation has enforcement ability of state lands. So they enforce below five thousand nine hundred twenty-three point six five. The sheriff's office will continue to enforce above that.
So they're above the fifty-nine hundred.
So.
Well, we, the sheriff enforces state law anywhere he goes inside the county. He, so he can enforce this below that line. And I think that the state lands would have, also enforce it below that line.
So the county, right now, the county contracts with sovereign lands and provides that enforcement because they have very few law enforcement officers. And so in order to fulfill that need, we actually hire temporary employees through the summer to do extra enforcement on sovereign lands, basically. Because that's basically where it's all, all at. And then anything that happens after, you know, the rest of the year, those are all taken care of by the, by the county sheriff deputies, or state parks, either one.
Yeah, because this year I've seen a lot of people parking within a hundred feet of the water north of the, especially the line of Lakota area. But I never hear anybody say that they see a deputy go down in there then, of course, because it's very visible from the road, let alone where my house is located.
Yeah, one of the problems with that whole situation is, is getting down there. Because you have to go through Lakota to get, to get down in there. So it's not a matter of them just being able to drive down to the beach. And they've either got to come up the beach from the marina or, right. And so that's an area that we've got to address. We had a little meeting not very long ago with sovereign lands. Rowdy Jensen, who is the new guy that's over Rich County or Bear Lake, and about that's an area that we'll have to, if the water stays down, that's an area that we've got to have better enforcement in and got to figure out how to do that better.
Yeah, if I drive to that with key to get into the cold down, all of your deputy sheriffs.
Not all of them. Yes, sir.
My question, you made me use the term sandy beaches. So we've got some area there along the highway, near those public access beaches, right, where you have the outhouses, that are more rocky than they are sandy? I'm assuming that this still would apply to that area, even though somebody would.
So it applies.
If I was being, I would say that, that's, you're talking about sand, this is rock here. Just curious.
High, high watermark is what designates the difference between private property or state property versus, or public property versus the sovereign lands. And there's very, very little property that's public property that's above the high watermark that's now private. You know, I mean, that's the thing, most, almost all of it's private. There's very little public property above.
Isn't that strip there along the highway? I'm going to say between Gus Switchpoint and over to the, to the rest area, isn't that all public? That's still, that's, that's the part that I'm thinking about. If you drive by and there's big rocks there and, you know, the shore is very rocky, it's above the high watermark, I want to say, or at least there's somewhere. I'm just wondering if that applies to that area or not, because it's not sandy.
This what defines, says beach means the area in between the mean high watermark and the water's edge. Beach also includes all collections of sand forming usable recreation areas adjacent to and above the high watermark. So I guess strictly speaking, if, if it's just a pile of rocks and there's no collection of sand there, this ordinance, if it is also above the mean high watermark, which I don't know, it would not apply.
The high watermark almost goes the highway along there.
Been told it's very high, but I don't actually know where. Yeah, I've never seen it marked out on the ground.
When I was young, the water started lapping the road, yep, south of the rest area. And that's when they put that burn up around there.
So now that I've had my questions asked or answered, is this where you get a chance to help it?
Yeah.
I'm in favor.
Okay.
And for the record, Doug Pincott.
All right, any other public comments? Bryce, you got anything?
Well, I got in a little late because of the wreck out there and the stinking light in town. Are you discussing the beach now?
Yeah.
And did you do a new ordinance on it?
We, we did and we didn't. We updated, all we did is update the county ordinance to the state statute. So, you know, about, oh, I don't know, five or six years ago, we upstated, we updated the state statute. And they actually used our ordinance for that state statute. For when the water was down and we had to have better control before they updated the state statute. So we just basically updated our ordinance to mirror the state statute.
Yeah, I've seen this over the last forty years, you know, with the regional commission and all the different type of people trying to get different rules and regulations down there. But it all boils down to the way we got the beach. So you, are you concerned at all about the risk of the beaches down there now or not?
Well, yes and no. I mean, still, still maintaining the hundred foot from the water to the, to the vehicles.
And it's about all of the stank of religion. So a lot of people have come to me, uh, the, the executive director of Bear Lake Watch. He was very concerned about, you know, oil leachages and all that other kind of stuff and affecting the ecosystem when it comes back up. But over the years, I've watched it and I don't believe this is a big problem, I think. We've got a much better class of people now, many younger, that don't litter. And if they find litter, they pick it up and that kind of stuff. So I haven't seen any, you know, issues like that. Other than there's a lot of people use it. And it smashes sometimes the wetland areas, but parts in the brush and the fragment, it probably may get anyway, so.
Yeah. Any other comments?
I just, I just go down there and see my captain this weekend, what gets on the beach. I was just keeping off from it altogether, which I know is, it's hard to do. But, I mean, it's just, you see the vehicles and leaking oil and antifreeze and human waste and dog waste and diapers and everything, the trash that people leave there and end up in the lake when the water does come up. So I think it's a real issue, like Bryce said, that so many people are using it, you know? And the, the rocks on the beach doesn't make any difference. They just go move all those rocks and make them go. So they just move the rocks out of the way and make a road down where, like that area north of the marina. And that's what they've done. They just moved the big rocks out of the way, piled them on the side and driving around them.
Yeah.
I think they may don't have some better signage about what they can do along the beach. I don't know how long this is going to be down, but I don't think a lot of these people that are coming up, coming over from the Wasatch from, really haven't had an idea about these other regulations. I don't know, did the, I never get any, did enforcement do much down there this year, did they do harder? Did they write any tickets or anything?
Yeah, quite a few. Oh, for, most of it was four-wheeler use of racing around up and down the beach was that. They had some people who, they basically, you know, asked them to move. They were too close, you know, backed right up to the water. And, and they got in their vehicles and pulled up. And then they come back twenty minutes later and they were backed right up to the water again, that kind of stuff. They, they have some newer, bigger signs up, you know, but they're not, every time they put signs up, then there's another new access. So they're not at every one of the accesses, but they have also moved signs down oh, about halfway between where the water is and the high watermark that they're, so they're down there. So if they drive down there, they know exactly what the beach rules are as well. So they've done a little better job on the signage, but there's still accesses that don't have the signs right by them, so. All right, if there's no more public comment, I will close the. I will close the public hearing. And we'll address the off-high vehicle, or excuse me, the Bear Lake beaches ordinance amending.
I make the motion that we amend the ordinance for protecting Bear Lake beaches and be more in line with the state legislature.
Second, have a motion.
Have a motion. Have a motion and a second to, to amend the ordinance. Oh, in favor of that, say aye? That was opposed. Okay, voting is unanimous on that particular ordinance. All right, now I'll open a public hearing for the off-highway vehicle use. And I'll turn that over to our attorney and he can explain what that's going to be. So if you speak loud, we'll.
Okay. Rich County has had an ordinance in place, opening up certain roads to off-highway vehicle use. And that ordinance was dated nineteen eighty-six. So part of this project, we're just going through, again, looking for anything that needs to be updated, make sure that we're still happy with what we have, what we have. So in a nutshell, the law from nineteen eighty-six was that off-high, that all unpaved county roads have been open to off-highway vehicle use in unincorporated Rich County since nineteen eighty-six. But it has to be unpaved. And then it stated, it said, as shown, except as shown on the attached map. And the map is lost to history, so we, we can't find the map. And so that alone necessitated relooking at this. And so the proposal for this new one, well, let me just highlight some, some boundaries set by state law that are applicable to us. Title forty-one of the Utah State Code states that a county may adopt an ordinance restricting use of off-highway vehicle to any county road or open up to a county road. So it's completely up to the county to do, but we have to specify either by description, by signage, or by map. So this only applies today. We're talking about county roads, we're not talking about the state highways. We don't touch those. We're not talking about municipality roads inside the towns. We're talking about unincorporated roads in the county. We're also not allowed to restrict any road to a street legal altering vehicle, which is one that has the necessary safety features, the blinkers, brake lights, seatbelts, things like that, which by state law are allowed to go anywhere that a normal car can go. And so those are kind of the bounds of what we're looking at today. The discussion last month and the proposal today is to open up not just unpaved roads, but all county roads in unincorporated Rich County to responsible use by an off-highway vehicle. And so a couple of specifics. The statute that we're proposed, that has been proposed today, it defines off-highway vehicle, which mirrors state law. Basically is exactly what you think it would be, you know, side-by-side, four-wheelers, includes motorcycles. I saw that you came in on motorcycle, that's street legal, which goes everywhere. We're talking like off-highway.
Dirt bikes.
Dirt bikes, things that don't have blinkers, brake lights, things like that. There aren't, I went through state law, we defined it here. There really aren't any surprises on what is considered an off-highway vehicle. It's exactly what you think. Let's see, so a couple of things this proposed ordinance does. It states that all unpaved county roads are designated as open to use by currently registered off-highway vehicles unless specifically closed by signage. So if there's one that for some reason wants to be closed, we do that later specifically and we post up signs. Two, for paved roads, states all paved county roads in unincorporated Rich County are also designated as open to use by currently registered off-highway vehicles. Two, uh, for paved roads, states all paved county roads in unincorporated Rich County are also designated as open to use by currently registered off-highway vehicles. Again, unless otherwise specifically closed by posting of signs. Uh, that just leaves open in the future, if there's one that for any reason needs to be closed, the commission will just do that by signage. Um, it makes it clear that this ordinance does not apply to towns and it doesn't apply to state roads, which are governed separately by town ordinance and by state law. Um, it requires that a minor operating off-highway vehicle must comply with state code, that is obvious, state code requires, I think we discussed last time, them to take a a little training course for safe usage. Uh, it also opens up this ordinance, um, all state, all county roads that have been seasonally closed because they're not being uh they're not being
Maintained.
Maintained for snow removal, those would be open for um for snowmobiles uh while they are closed to traffic. Uh, it states that it's a it's a pro, you're prohibited from uh from operating off-highway vehicle on any road that has been closed by signage. Has a couple exceptions, which we get from state law, which would be like times of uh emergency, you know, county emergency, we're talking about like earthquakes and and fires, things like that. Uh, you're allowed to cross any road at a perpendicular angle to, you know, if you get to from one trail to another trail. Uh, the penalty is an infraction, that's set by state law. And uh that really is it for this ordinance, so it, I think it takes one step further than what we've been since eighty-six, which is to open paved county roads to off-highway vehicle use, so.
So is the east side road considered a county road? If you could run four-wheelers and that kind of shit up there without license. Don't know whether that's a wise idea or not.
Was back before we improved the roads.
Yeah, I don't think there's, I don't think there's any county roads that don't have a million four-wheelers on the side beside them.
Yes.
Again, Doug Pincock, I live on Sweetwater Hills, so just to make sure I understand it correctly, I can now ride from my house on my four, either over to the golf course because they go on that paved county road and I'm okay. I still under a violation.
Is all of that outside, outside of the boundary of the town?
Yes, uh, Sweetwater Hill is in unincorporated Rich County, I mean, people ask where I live, that's where I tell them I live, is unincorporated Rich County, so.
So if, and if your HOA allows it, we don't get into HOA things, but if HOA allows it
It's a county road.
Then this county road, it will allow that.
That just makes it now illegal, I'm no longer invited, unfortunately, I've been in violation in the past, but I will no longer, as soon as this passes, I'm no longer
We got that on recording, just so you know.
I'm not afraid of that, I'm in favor. This is my public comment.
But that's, that's accurate, that's what we do, so.
So you mentioned about street legal uh O H E's uh, they're uh legal anywhere in the state, you know?
No, not anywhere in the state, but the um, but let me read the law specifically. This comes from state code, title forty-one, which is the motor vehicle title, and it says, "A municipality or county may not prohibit or restrict the use of a street legal altering vehicle on a street or highway where the use of another street legal vehicle is permitted." Now, there may be state law that says like a side-by-side can't be on the freeway, I think there is a lot about that, and I'm certain there would be that a four-wheeler couldn't be on I fifteen, but that would be state law. The prohibition is that towns, cities, and counties may not restrict them. If a car can go somewhere, a street legal side-by-side can go there as well, so.
Street legal means licensed?
Licensed, safety equipment, features, all the things that state law requires.
Okay, any other comments? Alright, we'll close that public hearing for the off-highroad, off-highway vehicle use. Um, and uh we either need to approve that update or hold.
Did you, I brought copies for the question, if I'll leave you from last month?
We're ready, uh, I'll make a motion that we uh approve this ordinance, the Rich County ordinance designated certain roads for off-highway vehicle use to be amended to how it's going to be on it, by our county attorney.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, we'll pass the unanimous. Alright. We need to talk about some ordinances, about some temporary changes on our temporary closure of a class D road, um, so let's talk about that one.
Okay. Great, so uh this, again, just same project, going through old ordinances, uh, this is one from nineteen ninety-six. Uh, this, the county passed an ordinance, um, about closing roads, uh, specifically class D roads, uh, from time to time. The ordinance from nineteen ninety-six, um, let's see, let me just summarize it for you. It does not define a class D road, um, it mentions that, um, uh, let's see. So there's just some problems with it, it does not define a class D road. Uh, it states that the Rich County Commission may by resolution temporarily close a class D road for a period not to exceed fourteen days. Then it sets conditions for when the commission can temporarily close a class D road. And it says, "In order to temporarily close a class D public road, the county commission must find all of the conditions set forth herein and post notices as provided." So it restricts the county commission's ability to temporarily close a class D, because these three things have to be true. Number one, the commission has to find that the usage of the pub, by the public for the period of time of the closure will adversely affect substantial property interests of the adjoining private landowners. Two, the commission has to find that the temporary closure of the road by the Rich County, by Rich County will not adversely affect the general public's access to existing public roads situated on either public or uh private or governmental, uh, parentheses B L M and U S four service lands. And it must find that use by the public by reason of the weather conditions and the condition of the road will cause greater damage to the road than is served by the public access over the road. It then states that it is a class B misdemeanor to drive over a road that has been closed. Uh, it states that if closed, certain signage will go up, uh, and that is it. So I think that the purpose of this is if you need to quickly close a a class D, so first off, there was some question about what is a class D road, and uh that is defined uh by Utah law, uh, this is in title seventy-two of the Utah State Code, which is the highways in gen, it's called the Highway Jurisdiction and Classification Act. So under title seventy-two, uh, a class A road is a state highway. A class B road is a county road, uh, which comprises all public highways, roads, and streets um that are situated outside of incorporated municipalities and that are not state highways. So it's outside of a municipality, city or town, that's been designated as a county road and it's not a state highway. Class C roads are just like that, except they're the city's version of that, so inside a city or town, not a state highway. So it's a B or C are very similar, it's just why you're talking city or county. A class D uh states, a class D road means any road, and this is the change. Road, way, like road, comma, way, comma, or other land surface route that has or is established by use or construction. So here you're thinking like a, a uh, a dirt road, it's merely a way that has been not really constructed, but established by use, and that is um for the public use of vehicles with four or more wheels, which I think excludes like a single track, you know, hiking or maybe a mountain biking. Uh, there's some single-track trails that like dirt bikes can get up, but this is for for four-wheel vehicles. And it's not a class A, B, or C, so primarily, I think it would be your routes, you know, would be considered a class D. So a couple proposals to update this, um, one is um uh, to provide some definitions in the ordinance of what a class D road is. Um, uh, this, this definition states, "Class D road means any roadway or other land surface established by use or constructed and has been maintained, provided for usage by the public for vehicles with four or more wheels," cites the code that comes from. "Class D roads do not include roadway, roadways inside the boundaries of cities or towns." "Class D roads include all unpaved roads adapted for use by motor vehicles." So it kind of gives a general layman's definition of that. Um, it provides again, that the county commission may by resolution temporarily close any class D road for a period not in excess of thirty days. Um, the fourteen day, there was nothing in statute that requires that. And it seems like to have a a maximum self-imposed of fourteen days, I mean, if you're closing a road because you've had heavy rains and they're getting chewed up, um, why not have the ability to, as a maximum, address it at your next commission meeting? So if you still want to do fourteen days and close it for fourteen, but if you think like, no, this needs to be thirty days, it just allows that meeting to meeting to be in place. There was, I don't know where that fourteen day came from, it's not imposed anywhere by state law. Um, and then it seemed a little nonsensical to require the county commission to only be able to close a road if those three provisions are true. And one of them, remember, one of the provisions was that it would um adversely, that usage by the public would adversely affect substantial property interests of adjoining private landowners. That doesn't seem to make any sense, like, you know, if you have private ranches on both sides or on A side and the road because of heavy rains is getting chewed up because of use, it seems irrelevant whether, you you just want it closed to protect the road itself and not have to find that you're you're protecting not only the road, but protecting private property owners. And so uh the proposal here is to remove that and just state that the county commission by resolution can temporarily close a class D road if if because of weather conditions and the condition of the road, used by motor vehicles during the period of closure would cause unreasonable damage to the road. And the temporary closure of the road would not adversely affect the general public's access to existing public roads, uh, situated on either private or governmental lands. So you're not cutting off a forest or uh something like that, presumably because there'd be other access points. The new ordinance keeps the same requirement that it be posted, um, and then makes it um, a class C misdemeanor to drive on a road that has been closed since this ordinance. Any questions or thoughts about that?
I have a question. You know, I can't take a permit of class D roads on county, that were developed by the county, there's a lot of track trails up there that are developed by side-by-sides, you know, jeeps and that kind of stuff. Are they considered class roads, class D roads, just because they're in the county, so a person can go up there? Do you want to make your own road, you can do that through the county?
No, the class D roads are already set in the county on a cla, on a class D map.
That's one you were going out and
Yeah.
In addition to prior use from eighteen hundred.
Right, right, those are the class D roads we're talking about, no new roads, only the ones that are on the county map that's designated and recognized by the state and by the county as class D roads, that's the ones.
I gotta run, so.
See ya.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, so I was on a ride uh from Old Canyon back towards uh Meadowville. And there's a road that side-by-sides are made over to a, to look down towards Lake Canadian Town.
It's an illegal road.
That's an illegal road. That's what I thought, there's a lot of them out there.
There's, there's a lot out there, we don't, we don't recognize those as any county roads, it's not, let me just put it this way, it's not recognized as a public road. But unless the forest or the B L M will go in, and that's up to them to close that illegal road.
That's what I was asking, is that B L M or is that county?
If you got caught on by one of them, you'd probably be in trouble.
Yeah.
Is it possible to get a copy of the class D map?
Mm-hmm. The recorder's office could provide you one.
Do I have to do it in grammar?
No, 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 no. Um, you actually probably could get one off of what's called A G R C, which is Automatic Geog, Geographic Resource. Um, off of that website and just go to Rich County and and um and type in class D roads and it would show you a map.
Have we historically been closing class D roads because of weather?
No, well, sometimes if if, for example, we have a weather event and um
Wash out.
It washes maybe a covert out or It washes it, in fact, we just had two weather events up here west of Randolph where literally the the road had, I mean, a truck could have fell in it, and so um at that situation, um, you know, particularly if it was during like the hunting season or that, we might call this road just to to keep people from, for a safety issue more than anything.
Yeah.
So it it needs to, we need to have an oper, a uh, an avenue to close roads, but it's not something we typically do, no.
Yeah, so this would be faster, easier, and you know, you could close it for thirty days as a maximum, not that you have to, but. Anyway, um.
Okay. We'll look at that for a public hearing.
So yeah, the proposal is, uh, I'm suggesting this is one that we would look at for a public hearing. It also, um, we, the county doesn't seem to have a signed copy of the original ordinance anywhere, and so.
Certainly will.
So you definitely need to look at this one in oral, I think, repeal it.
Okay.
So are you guys okay if I send, thanks for coming.
Yep.
Give you a random.
Uh, I'd like to have this one set at a public hearing on an upcoming month, to have it looked at. Did I give you a copy of that? This is.
Okay, um, would, I would entertain a motion to hold a public hearing on the class D road ordinance and update, I guess, for uh on October fifth, our next commission meeting.
Second.
Second.
A motion in the second, all in favor, say aye. Alright, so we'll put that on the agenda for one o'clock.
No, it was mine.
Okay, I'll get you a notice for that back, so you can post it.
Okay.
Alright, any suggestion, any changes you want made to that, or does that seem?
No, I think that's, I think that's pretty much.
I thought that one was pretty straightforward.
Gives us an opportunity if we need to, we're not able to do it if we need to, so. Alright, let's go ahead here, Noxious Weeds.
Okay, so this is another one, um. We're we're getting there on this list, I I won't be coming back forever, but I think I'm trying to get it done by December to have this project done. Alright, so Noxious Weeds, um, I I wanted to take just a minute and discuss. I did not draft a draft because there's too much here that's like policy and I didn't want to take a stab at it before we just heard your thoughts about what you want to do. So the county has had an ordinance, in in nineteen eighty, the county uh, put ordinance in place called ordinance providing for the control of noxious weeds within Rich County. Um, so let me just, do we, do we have a county weed supervisor right now?
Mm-hmm.
Who's that?
His name's TJ Hoffman.
TJ Hoffman. Do we have a weed control board?
Yes.
His name's TJ Hoffman.
No, we still have a weed board.
But it's for marijuana.
Oh, gee.
He had a weed board.
It was nineteen eighty.
Under Willis Boys and Eleanor Heat Johnson, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
What does, do they, uh?
Well, they need to, they need, need to meet on a regular basis. When I say regular basis, at least once a year and just go over. The thing that's changed this whole thing is, is the state has a noxious weed list.
Yes.
And they actually designate, and we can add others, but we have, everyone that's on the list from the state is what is the same list that we have as a county.
Okay. I'm, I'm impressed that you know so much about county weeds. That's exactly right, so, um, I, I, uh, let me just go through a couple of the state law things, the options that we have. And then you can, then you can tell me how you want to do it. So again, Utah state law, title four is the Utah Noxious Weed Act. Um, there's a state weed board run by the depart- the director of the or the commissioner of the Department of Agriculture, and they do a lot of statewide stuff. And then, uh, it allows, uh, it says a county may, um, uh, appoint a county weed control board composed of not less than three or more than five. So three, four, five members and and this commission can appoint the county weed board. Uh, it says that it gives some duties to the county weed board. Um, uh, let's see. Let's see. It says who they have to come from. Uh, two members have to be ranchers or farmers who whose primary source of income is derived from production agriculture. Um, they're four-year terms. They can be with or without compensation. Are we doing compensation? No, okay. Um, is that working? Okay. Do you know how many members we have right now?
It was five.
It's five, okay, five.
But since this, they, they haven't been very active since the state went ahead and and put their legislation in place because the the county was the one that decided on what meat weeds was considered noxious and could be sprayed regardless of, well, either the owner took control or the county would take control and bill the owner. But, um, since the state put this statute in place, it's an issue of, um, the county has the ability to go and notify people. Uh, they're not either, and we also have the responsibility to take care of the weeds in our right of ways as well.
Exactly, yeah. So, um, uh, the county weed board has some duties, um, under the direction of the county commission. They, um, they coordinate a countywide noxious weed control program designed to prevent and control noxious weed with weeds within a board's county. Uh, noxious weeds are set by, um, the Department of Agriculture and they have a list which is right here. Um, and we can add things to that list as a county. We can also take things off the list if we want to. Um, uh, county legislative body, so it would be not the county weed board adding to the list, but the county commission may declare a particular weed or competitive plant that's not on the state noxious weed list, a county noxious weed within the board's county. And so if there's a, something in here that we care about, are we aware of any of those?
Not far.
So far, we're pretty satisfied with this list.
That's pretty, it's a pretty complicit, comprehensive list.
It's, yeah, it's a lot of things on that list. Um, the, um, we can also have a weed control supervisor, um, which can be paid or unpaid. We can also share a weed control supervisor with other counties through near local agreement. Do we have our own right now?
Mm-hmm.
And is that working?
Mm-hmm.
Unpaid?
No, he's paid.
He's paid?
He's a full-time employee.
Okay, full-time. So his job is to detect and treat noxious weeds throughout the county, to direct a weed control program for the county weed control board. So the board kind of sets the policy and he's like where the rubber meets the road. So that, like, he works at their behest, or they kind of formulate his policy and direction and what they want him to do. Um, let's see, um. The sup- the county weed supervisor, under the direction of the local county weed board, shall examine all land in the county to determine whether the rules set by the department are being met. So basically looking for weeds, compile data on infested areas, consult and advise upon matters pertaining the best and most practical method of noxious weed control. Uh, supervisor provides assistance and direction for the most effective control and prevention, investigates violations of this chapter, uh, enforces noxious weed controls within the county, and performs any duties set by the county weed control board. So they're kind of the, the policymakers, um, and and the county weed supervisor is doing the legwork. Um, let's see, um. If we, if the county supervisor finds noxious weeds growing on private property, um, then, uh, basically they send a notice to the owner who has five working days to, uh, comply with removing those weeds, or it can be declared a public nuisance. Once declared a public nuisance, um, we send them another notice stating that we're going to do it for them and bill them. Um, they can appeal to the county weed board. Um, and then after that, they can appeal up to this commission if they want. Um, but either they need to remove the weeds or the county weed supervisor will remove the weeds and the bill goes down to the private property owner. And it states that a commission, a county commission may establish and maintain a noxious weed control fund in each county for use in the administration of this chapter. Do you know, do we have a budget outlined for that?
Well, well, not specifically, but it's within the budget that if there's areas that need to be deemed a nuisance, that he's got enough money in his budget to control those areas.
Okay.
And we bill those people if it's on private property or if some of it's even in our county right of ways, and so.
Okay. So, uh, John, so do you have any questions about how that would work or?
Thanks.
Hey, thanks for coming.
Right, carefully.
Thank you. So, uh, what if, uh, the, what if somebody's neighbor has a bunch and keeps going on for the other neighbor? Does the other neighbor have some such a re- retribution?
So the way that that should happen is that the supervisor should go to the one who has the weeds, give them a written notice that they're harboring noxious weeds, and then they have five days to remove it, or the supervisor will have them removed at their expense.
Is this a musk thistle?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the type of thistle we have?
Not in Musk and Canadian. Musk is the real high.
So the state requires us to have a weed control board?
Does not.
It does not, we may.
It says may under both the county board and the supervisor. Um, so you, you're not required to have that. But it doesn't sound like the state weed control board does much more than policy.
Right.
Like, they maintain that list, but they, they're not pulling weeds or spraying. They're just kind of like the policy for the state.
Yeah.
So I don't think you're gonna get much if you don't have them. So anyway, uh, that's great. I wasn't aware that we had that. There still are some issues with this ordinance. Um, it doesn't, it, it appoints a county weed supervisor and says they can appeal to a county weed board, doesn't create a county weed board, which is weird. Um, and doesn't give any duties for a county weed board. Um, there are also some things in here that, uh, have probably changed since this was done. You know, it'll say that you have X number of days after the notice and X number of days to appeal, and all of those days no longer comply with state statute. Um, it never states, uh, you should just have something that states that a private landowner can't have noxious weeds on their property. Uh, and there's nothing in there that says that, so it's missing that key provision. So this is one that I also think that we should look at next month for an update.
Okay.
It's forty-two years old.
Take a stab at it and look at it.
But what if we do have that noxious weed on our place and it's not really our priority? And yet somebody, I mean, so we're going against everything by having it there.
Do you mean like if a rancher has, you know, a hundred acres?
And he's got musk thistle on it and he, it's not his top, his priority to deal with it?
I think the state law basically is that since weeds spread, that, um, it's, it's a nuisance you're harboring by land that's there, so it has to move up your priorities and, um.
So they're going for eradication.
We want to eradicate, or or control at least. And if you have one landowner in a patchwork who says like, well, I actually like musk thistle, you know, that, that would be so we're after eradication. And so the, 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 the purpose of this is, it might not be that landowner's priority. The county supervisor's job is to make sure it is their priority and, you know, it doesn't mean the landowner has to go out and pull them, you know, maybe they coordinate and the supervisor says, hey, let me just come out and spray it or something. They work together to get them off, but you, you, the theory is one spot and you have five days to get it off. So, can you think of anything that you want in that ordinance that's different, anything that's not working?
No, like I said, make a stab at it and let's.
Should be a difference between a little, a few weeds here and there and somebody that's blatantly got a problem. I don't know if you worded anything.
Yeah.
But there is a difference if somebody has a little bit on these property and somebody that's got a real issue of spreading it to the neighbors and everybody.
Sure. So, um, we'll try to.
Shouldn't be all lumped into one sum. But I don't.
Okay. I have an idea for that. Okay, I'll, uh.
You mean like that? Seems like you need to just take care of a little tiny patch.
Yeah, I mean, like Davis County is overrun with goat heads and, you know, there was a time when you could have dealt with that and that time's probably passed.
Oh, just as high as.
So I got some up behind me.
Alright, so you're gonna.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna email you guys a draft.
Yeah, draft on that.
Put it up next month for a meeting, uh, hearing, with the idea that after the meeting the next month, we'll try to put on for a hearing.
Okay.
So.
Alright, so, um, amending the pol- per- personnel policy, further amending of that.
Yeah, so this, this we dealt with last time we were together.
See, you're not gonna give up your chair. I got the hardest one of play.
So we're in discussion about that new ordinance.
Oh.
For, for, uh.
Yeah, we had another discussion with, uh, the city, just a little while ago on that, and they're, they're finalizing what they're gonna do too, and J U P was involved in that, so. Yeah, as soon as we can do something with that, then better for everybody, I think.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks. Did you, Terry, did you come for anything or?
No, I, I was over here, so I thought I'd just listen to each thing.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Okay, so last time we were here, the commission asked for just a slight change in language and I didn't have a way to do that right then, so I just made that change and signed it today. The change you wanted made was to make it specific that it's out of county travel for trainings and conferences. And so I've added that language into here and otherwise it's.
So did we approve it with that change?
Yeah, I just didn't have a copy for the sign.
Okay, great.
Thank you for giving that. You're welcome.
Alright.
Uh, so you know, there's a program that we're using for our, our general plan called Civic Link. Um, we're just trying it out for a year, but it does let you break out ordinances and codes. It's like our handbook.
Great, okay. On a, on the website?
Yeah, it's really easy to navigate.
On a PDF or is it like a word?
It can do both. So you can export it to PDF, but it, but it's a, it's a, it's just a database. So you, you have your site, your site menu, you can click each section and it will expand it or insert.
Okay.
He recommended that one of the PDF thirty-page PDF go.
So like come December, I'm hoping that
Yeah.
and then have that be all done.
And if somebody needs to download the whole thing, they could.
Oh, I got a sign. So when you said, did you approve this last month, I'm not sure you voted on it. I think you, I think we just were all of them in accord.
I don't think we did. I think we just put it on the board.
Are you okay for motion, though?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment to the personnel policy three hundred dash four hundred, section three.
Okay.
Second.
A motion in the second, on favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Those opposed. Okay, motion passes. Yeah, honestly, that amendment will be added to our personnel policy.
So with this one and then with the Juneteenth, we have those two with as many ordinances as I can muster up. I think we probably have eight left that require some attention. Some of them I think are just straight appeals. Like there's, there's a couple that just don't make sense anymore, but it'd be kind of even. So.
Are you taking off right now?
Uh, I'm out of agenda items, but I can hang around.
I was, you may want to talk to.
You need to be here for, uh, the sheriff's executive session.
Okay.
Ah, so that's in thirty minutes, so. Did you have some lunch?
Send the card.
Okay.
Are we, uh, off record?
Nope.
What, what do you think?
Can you help me go get Kim?
Yes, or I can.
And will you email me
In here.
a scanned copy of those two ordinances? And the policy that we signed, so I can keep copies of those. Okay. What did, uh, what did Frank Zula want this morning?
Um, he just had some concerns, um.
He's the property owner that is affected only because he's the straight shot up and over the bike path?
Yes.
As the exits, okay.
So there's your two signed ordinances today, but thank you. And then the commissioners wondered, maybe they can mention that to you, what you want him to review, that tracks or whatever it's called.
Oh, yeah, of, of collection. Way of collecting outstanding, uh, particularly ambulance bills is what we were concentrating on.
Okay, and that's this?
Yes.
To the state?
Yeah. Um, yeah, he just had some concerns about, uh, the grade and how steep it is for one thing, and then, um, when they poured concrete, they emptied their truck out or cleaned or washed their truck out and it's, and it is a pile area. Felt like that, that ought to be removed and had some concern about some ground cover. I'm not sure. Uh, we'll look at that and, and see what he, what he thinks, um. And he, he thinks that there needs to be a gate on the other road, the straight road that comes in. Told him we'd meet with our engineer and probably UDOT and just look at those concerns and.
There, Mickey. For him? For him?
Well.
Got a second there, you're all good.
Yeah, so his bypass here and, and his, this is his driveway. Then there's another road that comes in like this and the bike path goes on down.
And the bikers are using it for a turn.
And he, he would like to put a gate here so they don't come around and back up. Anyway, we told him we'd look at it and see what we, you know, physically could be done and address his concerns if we could.
Okay.
Go get your lunch.
Alright, I'll be back in half an hour.
Yeah, if you would, please.
Alright, see you guys.
Thanks. Professor Wilson?
Ms. Wilson is my assessor. I have one personal property exemption. The rest have been given penalties and I'm gonna do this weekend, just right after our last meeting.
Darn it, no penalties for him, huh? Okay, so I entertain a motion to approve the proper personal property tax exemption, so move.
Second.
Have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Alright, you wanna change hats?
Yep, Rich County Ambulance Secretary. Um, we had met as a presidency and they, in July, they raised the amount of, the rates. The state usually raises them in July. So as an advanced ground ambulance, we can charge up to one thousand six hundred and twenty-five per transport. And we charge right now seven hundred, and the presidency opted to go for a thousand for a call out.
And that is, and that is plus mileage, right?
Plus mileage. And we're at thirty dollars a mile. Uh, we have been that way, I, I know since before two thousand and nineteen, but we haven't changed our call out. So, I know for a fact, not since two thousand and nineteen. We're at thirty dollars a mile.
So longer now, it's a hundred and fifty bucks on top of a thousand.
Yeah. But with fuel costs and things like that, um, we can charge up to thirty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents per mile. We can't go over that. We can charge for fuel costs and things like that. Uh, we have not done so, we've just.
So you're not recommending that we change the per mileage?
Per mileage. You're only recommending that we change the call out fee from seven hundred dollars to a thousand. Leave the mileage at thirty dollars a mile. But again, that is your call, but that's the recommendation from the, uh, Rich County EMT Association Presidency.
What did you say you're charging now?
Seven hundred and thirty, thirty dollars a mile.
You guys know best.
I agree with that, for sure.
Well, we haven't, it's been quite a while since we raised it.
Yeah, do you know how long it's been?
I know, I look back to two thousand and nineteen, and we hadn't raised it since two thousand and nineteen. And I don't remember if we raised it in nineteen, it seemed like it was before that, but my records that I can easily get to were at, as I look back to nineteen, it was at seven hundred and thirty since then.
So it's time.
Well, we, fuel costs are a lot higher than they were in two thousand and nineteen, so.
I'm surprised, well.
But you guys, you know, kind of if we fall short, which we haven't fallen short of our budget, or I mean, overspent our budget, does that mean it makes sense? We haven't.
Well, when we used to buy an ambulance, it was eighty thousand. Now it's two hundred and eighty, so. I mean, it is what it is. I mean, that's still, that's still a bargain for, I mean, compared to.
Well, paramedic ambulances.
We're not raiding, we're not to the top of the.
No, and paramedic ambulances can cha, uh, charge up to one thousand nine hundred and thirty. And most of them, most of these outside agencies do, or most agencies do charge the full amount.
Yeah.
Cause they, their philosophy is let insurance pay for it, but as we know, not everybody has insurance. And even if they have insurance, a lot of times it's catastrophic because they can't afford insurance. So it only pays the really big stuff, but, so we're trying to keep them as low as we can but still be able to operate. So that is our recommendation to you guys.
Okay.
I'll make that motion that we increase the call out rate to a thousand bucks and keep the mileage at thirty dollars per minute. Following the recommendation of the presidency?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, a motion of the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Passing unanimously, so you go ahead.
When do they start that, right now?
We can start, we didn't, it goes into effect July for the state, but we were past July. And I needed to meet with them and get their recommendation, and I knew the first thing that you guys would ask is what does the presidency recommend? And so by the time we met and decided and then got it to you, it's now.
But, why are you gonna start, what, I think what he was saying is, is when we're gonna start billing, as of today?
Probably as of today unless you guys want to do differently.
Today's good.
So.
We probably oughta make a motion that that's in effect.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we increase those rates from seven hundred to a thousand starting today, September seventh, for our ambulance call out rate.
Okay, second to that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, alright, now we got a begin date, so there, good to go.
Thank you.
Yeah. Alright.
Anything else for me?
Nope, unless you've got anything else for us.
Nope.
What does B O A look like?
I think we have five or six appointments.
We all got them on Monday?
Monday, yeah.
So far.
We have everything on Monday. We have one right after lunch and then, uh, we have, I think one more slot open before lunch.
Which Monday was that?
The nineteenth. Do not forget.
I won't.
We start at, usually ten o'clock is when our people come, that's when we. It's ten o'clock, so we haven't got filled up. We've had people say they're coming and.
So not this coming Monday, but the week prior Monday, yeah.
So we got a lot of appeals by mail, by any chance?
I've got a few that actually have paperwork back. There's not a huge amount. I've got some stakes and corrections. I've got some houses on that shouldn't be, uh, I don't know, a few things like usual, but not, not super bad. I'm thinking one day it should have a pretty well locked out recommendation even taken out maybe, so.
You were saying at ten, right?
The nineteenth.
Right?
At ten o'clock, yes. That hasn't changed. For how many years have you been in here now? Saying, I'm just saying, we started at ten, unless.
So that you, that means I get here at ten thirty.
Ten p.m.
Maybe I better tell you, nine o'clock, Norm, or, Norm, well, that was.
He's a bad as he.
It's good to say.
I mean, worse. Do you know how many times I've said that?
Norm?
He just gets, so he answers it anymore.
Yes, he's kind of like, wow, brothers, you know, probably cut one in the same cloth.
We got, I got called that when I was this tall.
Norm?
Her mom, she'd go through all the kids before she could get to me.
Well, there's a few, again. Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, stay open, ask me if you're interested.
I have an item to bring brought out, but it's, it needs to be a surprise for a person. So maybe when we're off record.
Okay. Um.
That's ominous.
Uh. Do you want to do the minutes? I mean, the expenditures.
I'll make a motion that we approve the expenditures for, um, August twenty twenty-two. Second.
Have a motion of the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Those opposed. Okay, we'll approve those expenditures. I'm gonna approve the minutes. Um, Dale just texted me and said he's just about done with the crash at the junction and will be here as quickly as he can, so.
Well, since the next thing's a, an executive session, I'll probably just stop this right.